Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, December 2, 2013, to order. And Mr. Clerk, if you would lead us in the...
Pardon me.
Absolutely. Pardon me. To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
All right. Thank you very much. I will paraphrase the agenda that we're considering tonight, that we expect to hear tonight. We will start with, Keith will present the mail. Then we'll take public input and hear updates from members. At 7:15, we're scheduled to hear annual license renewals. At 4:00, sorry, at 7:30, item number four, we have two joint meetings, one with Park and Rec. and one with Finance Committee and School Committees. At 8:30, we have an update from the town administrator for the complete streets policy introduction. And at six, at item six, at 8:35, we have a few items at the Board of Selectmen, some business that we're going to take care of there. You'll see that. And at 9:30 is other business, including our scheduled minutes approval. Keith, do you want to go through the mail?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was just one item that I included in the mail packet this week, and it was notice from our state legislators that the governor last week signed into law the special act that we had petitioned to affect a land exchange between Conservation Commission and Park and Rec. It had been approved by the town meeting in May of 2013. It had been unanimously approved by the Conservation Commission and Park and Rec. Prior to that, it involves repurposing a portion of conservation land of the rear Shelburne Village over 55 site instead for active recreation. And it repurposes parkland of Great Road near the Apple Dior subdivision as conservation land. So that required a two-thirds vote of both the House and Senate. Beacon Hill, it was unanimous vote of both. And then the governor signed it into law. So we can go ahead and implement that change.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It opened up to public input now. Does anything you have, that you'd like to report? Yes?
So Amy Tarlo Lewis, I'm at Three Omega Way. And about two weeks ago, I attended the magic agricultural forum. They were making recommendations based on some researches and studies that they had been doing about how to effectively use land and manage land and make recommendations to municipalities. And they had referenced the trust for the public land. They had done, completed this amazing study that I was absolutely blown away by. And it was basically, the study is about return on investment in parks and open space in Massachusetts. And I just was really, really impressed by the report and just really wanted to come and share some of the information that was in it, because I think it's really pertinent to what's happening now. And so there's the 50-page report, which I have, and I can get you electronic copy. But they did a one, a two-page summary, which I've passed out to everybody. And since the Board of Selectmen is really the visionary for the town, and really kind of thinks about the future and what in the master plan that we're going to be working on, I thought it was important for people to have this. And I know the Board of Selectmen is really committed to doing the right thing by the town, and to really kind of investigating and looking at all the different resources and studies that organizations like this put out. And so what I really wanted to do was just sort of highlight some of, some important, about five important points that came out of this 15-page document.
Can I ask you a question, Russ?
Yeah.
You only have a couple of minutes here.
I know.
Would you like to be agenda at an upcoming meeting where you can provide something a little more in-depth, even if you organize a PowerPoint?
I would. That's, was going to be like one of my final points.
Okay.
But I will go through my final.
If I make a couple now?
Because I know you've got a type.
We can probably get you on in January sometime?
Okay, sure. So one of the things that it highlights, it is conservation of land grows, conservation land grows jobs in local economies by supporting tourism, outdoor recreation, agriculture, and forestry. Conservation also realizes return on investment of natural goods and services, water quality, flood control, air pollution, and stormwater management. Conservation also supports local fiscal health. Open space and farmland requires an average of $0.43 in services for every $1 in tax revenue. But residential land requires $1.10 for every $1 in tax revenue. So if you think about the changes in park rates and all the new homes that are going up, all those new homes are going to be, need more schools, and there are more, more kids. More kids is going to ultimately mean a new school for Littleton. It's not going to be the death, the Littleton Public School System isn't going to die from the 40B. It's the 40B, and it's the Sanderson property, and all the little houses that are going up in the Goldsmith and Long Lake area, that's going to ultimately change the school system for us. Conservation also support real estates and tax property values. Of your property value is boosted by increasing your municipal tax revenues, because houses that are located next to wildlife refugees or permanently protected land can increase your sale price between $2,000 and $34,000. In homes that are located near the Minuteman Bike Path and the Rail Trail in Groton, sell 40%, 45% faster than houses that are not. So conservation is really, is part of economic development in town. I think there's a lot of conversation about residential or business, and how they're, it's one or the other, and conservation, or it's one or the other, conservation. But really, it's three pieces. It's residential, it's business, and it's conservation. And this report lists why conservation really is part, does give you return on investment. My concern is that I'm not really seeing any real push with the master plan that's, that we're supposed to have. And I really feel like time is running out. The market's changing. We can just, all you have to do is drive up and down Goldsmith Road in the Long Lake area, or see the deforestation project on Harwood Ave, to see that things are changing, and the market's changing. With all due respect to members of the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, none of these people, as well-intended and educated as they are, do not have the expertise to navigate the myriad of issues between economic development and conservation and real estate and all the different facets in preserving farmland. It's so complex. We really need expertise to help us with our master plan. And people in town, over and over and over again, whether they voted for Church Meadows and other things that we've had, have always said yes to conservation and protecting open space. And so what I would really like to see is for the town to consider inviting the Trust for the Public Land and/or Equity Trust, who has expertise in this, to help guide us through our master plan. You know, I don't think we can leave it to well-intentioned citizens. We just don't have the internal expertise to do this. And time is running out. Development is picking up. And on Littleton's 300th birthday, I think we need to make a deeply thought-out plan for the future of Littleton.
Okay.
There you go.
Well, that's great. I think if we can come up with a summary, if you want to come up with a summary for, I don't know, we haven't started looking at January yet, but maybe the first meeting in January, if you had like an eight o'clock time slot where you can come in and present this, and any other ideas that you have. Maybe you mentioned a lot of things about the master plan. If you have any ideas to kick it off and get going, you mentioned a couple agencies that can help us. So any type of plan like that would be great to hear. So you can just check in with Keith or...
It would be great if we could invite someone like Darcy Schofield back, who made that initial presentation. I think, no, she really has the expertise to kind of guide us through that conversation.
Sure.
Again, I put myself in the category of well-intentioned citizens.
Yeah. So, what do you think, 15 minutes, half hour, maybe half hour?
Sure. We have, you haven't set your meetings yet, but we're tentatively the 13th and 27th of January.
Tuesday.
Oh. Tuesdays instead of Mondays, huh?
Why don't you check in with Keith once we set the agenda, and we'll get you on for a second. I don't know how much they're going to fill up tonight, but we'll get you in there. So.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Davis. And a while back, I did a project on the gazebo, like painting, and I was wondering how my proposal, what status was in that. Please, Park and Rec.
I know it generates the same question. Did you have any answers? Did you find any answers? I, from what I understood, that it was approved. And when you left, it was, we would find the money somehow. So I don't know if, when the request was going to be made, that you actually needed it. And if that's what you're here for now, we can talk about somehow making that appropriation. I'll park and rec here also, so we can talk about that a little bit. Does, does anybody have an update? I was kind of waiting for the request for the actual funds. What do you have?
It was my understanding that it was in Park and Recreation's hands, and we happen to be having a joint meeting with them in a very short time.
They did send a letter to, they sent a letter back to you saying that they had approved it. And I guess they're going to move all back into the report.
Okay. So it seems to me, at this point, what would be appropriate would be for the Board of Selectmen to find a line item for, what is it, $200 and some odd dollars, $290 every three years. I'm fairly confident that in order to keep our gazebo in good repair after all the hard work you did, that we'll be able to do that. I understand, though, until you get some sort of a thumbs up from us, you can't progress with the requirements that you need to move forward with respect to your recognition vis-à-vis the Girl Scouts, correct?
Okay.
So we need to find a way to act as a board so that you can move forward with your achievements.
And that, do we have that letter from the Park and Rec?
We may have. Earlier today, I asked for some evidence that the Park and Rec had actually put it in their budget, and did not get a convincing answer.
All right. Well, let's talk to them when they're here. And just not, let's not lose our, lose focus on that. Keep that on the agenda.
And I'm sure we'll be able to get this pretty much resolved tonight. I think, I don't think that $208, or whatever the case may be, is a budget buster.
I would like to say she did a fantastic job. And the town should be really appreciative of all the hard work she did.
Yeah, thank you.
But going back to what Jenna said, is there something that you need for the Girl Scouts, a letter from us saying that you did the project, or that you proposed the project?
A letter from you saying that the monetary issue is taken care of for the every three years, that her proposal is accepted.
Oh.
And will be funded.
Oh, okay.
Sure, that's what we can plan on.
Yeah, or Jen.
Yeah. You could vote to do that, Matt. What you can't do is vote to appropriate next year's budget, which is what town meeting does, but...
And just to let her know. So if it'll be in next year's budget, which means June 1st, the money would be avail, uh, July 1st, the money would be available.
Well, I mean, I think we'll want to discuss that with Kate, because it's, I'm, I'm not convinced that it's in the program for 2015. It may be in the program for 2016.
Okay.
But it's every three years, so it wouldn't be until, you know, three years from now, so 2016.
2016, which is fiscal year 17.
So what, so what the board's doing really is more, you're adopting a policy, you're not, you're not approving a budget, because you don't have a request for 2016 budget.
So it's a letter saying that the Board of Health, you know, the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, accept this proposal, and...
I can make a motion for you. Make a motion, make a motion to authorize through town meeting and appropriate sufficient funds for the painting of the town gazebo at Fay Park.
Second.
Do you want to add, and maintenance?
And maintenance. Well, I guess the, well, the requirement was for the paint, right? I mean, we want to deal with the actual request on the table here. And I think if we just stick to the paint and the $280, or whatever the case may be.
Okay.
Starting in fiscal year 17, July 1st, 2016.
Aye, you can second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I vote.
So we'll get a letter drafted and, yeah, move along. Okay? Move it along. Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Anybody, anything else from the public? Okay. Move on to member updates. Start with Alex. Anything?
Just very briefly, that the committee, the study committee on voter participation is looking at several things right now, in hopes to have some more recommendations in time to put in place for town meeting. Some of it's pretty exciting stuff.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty good stuff.
Good. Okay. Go.
Two things. First thing, as far as the 300th anniversary goes, and dealing with fundraising, a bit of a slowdown because of the holidays, and we have people making phone calls. But if you're a local business, you could help us by giving us a call, so we can set up an appointment, so we can go see what kind of sponsorship that we can work out with those different companies. You can talk, contact myself, Jack Homart, or Deb Laflamme. And the second thing is, I know, Jim, I don't want to take anything away from you, because I figure you're going to be talking about the football team. But besides that, I wanted to make sure that other teams were recognized at our high school for something comprehensive. And I just wanted to point out, the following teams won league championships this fall season. The golf team, field hockey, girls' soccer, and football. And then the following teams qualify for the M.I. tournament. What I don't have is information on how far they have gone. The golf team went to the tournament, field hockey, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, and boys' and girls' cross-country, along with football.
Okay.
Let's play the call sheet.
Jenna, do you have anything?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the Council on Aging is hosting coffee hours. The first one is the 11th of December at 10 o'clock, where our chief, Kelly, will be mixing and mingling with the seniors in town. I have committed to go in January and, on the 15th. And Chief Wudzinski will be there in February with a date to be determined.
All right. So, yeah, the Littleton football team is playing for the state championship in Gillette Stadium this Saturday at 9 o'clock. There is a bus, a fan bus that's going to be leaving from the high school. It's an exciting time. This is the first time that, in '08 and '09, we made it to the Super Bowl. They had a reorganization now in MIA football. And Littleton finally gets to go to Gillette, whereas a lot of eastern teams, you know, the bigger city teams got to go. So we get to actually go in and play. So it's very exciting. And I'm going, I can't wait. And just one other thing, Littleton lacrosse is accepting applications and sign up. So...
All right, great. I don't have anything except for that report cards came out, and the girls are watching at home. So I just want to congratulate Reagan and Lilly on outstanding report cards today. It was very, very, very proud of you.
Nice.
I have a bed now. Okay. Thank you for that. We'll move on to our agenda item number three, annual license renewals. Keith?
Yep. We have the list of licenses for the board to act upon and to vote to renew. And we have Jeff Patterson here to go over some of the items in there, and invite him to do so.
Evening. I assisted Jen with the licensing packets and reviewing as the information came in. As of last week, when I wrote the memo, there were some outstanding signature policies for three of the establishments. Those have since been turned in, so the packets are all complete. There is one outstanding issue. It's the fire and safety certificate for the Littleton sub shop. That's still outstanding, and that's something for you to review and determine how that's going to be dealt with. But as far as the packets and all their information, it's complete and finished.
And Town Council had submitted a letter to us outlining three potential options that you may want to choose from in dealing with the, with the sub shop license.
Okay. All right.
So I just have one question on the sub shop for Roland. It's, the ramp, does it have to do with the ramp, the handicap ramp?
Yes, the ramp is too steep.
And what is the process for them getting that?
Really simple. You either fix it, or you approach the AAB, the Architectural Access Board, and request a variance if you think you're qualified for a variance. I had in my hand, as of a few minutes ago, a variance request, a stay, which I get to respond to, and I have to respond to, because there's an inconsistency here. But we'll do that. It's just mine. No certificate of occupancy has been issued for that. An inspection, a certificate of inspection was issued last year to allow the pub to open, with the understanding that after 365 days, the problem that we observed, the ramp, would be fixed. We're here at the 11th hour, still waiting for that to be done. And that's where we sit.
I know, can you describe it? I know it's going to, I've heard somewhat of what it is, and I know it sounds minor, but really, with the MAAB, there is no, oh, you're almost there, it's okay. It's...
The AAB, and you and I can walk into the pub and have no problem.
Yeah.
But there are a few individuals in town and throughout the state that are wheelchair bound.
Yeah.
And they can't get in.
Yeah.
They may find it significant to, that that 1% that it's increased, they might find it difficult to navigate.
Right.
I might mention to you that the auditorium at the high school was off by 1%. And you went, as a selectman, you went to the AAB and requested a variance and received it. So it's not something insurmountable, but it's something you have to do.
Okay. All right.
So when, when was the, either tenant or landlord put on notice that this needed to be fixed?
365 days ago.
So the time has lapsed?
Yes.
I also, in looking at the paperwork that was presented to us, see that part of the application process includes, if you are a tenant seeking variances, a letter from the owner of the building authorizing you to apply on his or her behalf is required. I don't see an accompanying letter in this packet of information. Are you aware of any landlord letter?
No.
Okay. So it could be the case that the Architectural Access Board would reject this because it's an incomplete application.
Yes.
I wanted to stop you.
I'm all set.
I'd like to hear from the fire chief, too, as far as your inspection. And is, are you on the same issue?
That's correct. Yes, because it's a means-to-be agreement.
Okay. All right. So is that the ramp is too steep going into the...
By 1%. It may seem insignificant.
No, I do, I...
By 1%.
No, I do...
It's supposed to be 8.3%, and it's, it's 9.3%.
Right.
But the Americans with Disability Act, which was passed in 1990, set these standards. So 23 years ago...
Well, to be clear about that, I do not enforce the ADA. I enforce the AAB, which is the state law for handicap accessibility. It's very close to the ADA, but I don't participate in ADA whatsoever.
So what you just said, they can go, I thought at one, at some point, they could go to 1 in 10, though. But this doesn't...
1 in 10?
Yeah.
No, 1 in 12.
1 in 12.
Right.
Okay. 1 in 12 was .8. But I thought at one point, it could go to 1 in 10, which it does, sounds like they don't even meet that.
When you go 1 in 10, that's very nice, because it's less of a slope.
Yeah.
But you can go to a maximum of 1 in 12.
Yeah.
This happens to exceed 1 in 12.
Right.
Which the high school does, too, but we got a variance from.
You receive the variance. I wouldn't let the auditorium occupy until they receive the variance that you got.
And how long will this process take with MAAB?
It took us 60 days, from the second we applied to when we received the variance in hand.
The question I, you've already said it to me, but I think you should point out that there is a stamped plan that shows that it could have been put in properly, correct?
I spoke with an attorney for the applicant today, and I gave him a copy of the stamped plan by a registered engineer, an architect, I'm sorry, designing the ramp for the front of that facility. I also spoke with the builder, who says that the, the design couldn't work because the dimensions were off. Whatever the case is, the, you know, the...
We're here now.
We're here now. And, you know, something has to be done to correct that deficiency, whatever it is.
Okay. I think we can let the, we'll let the owner speak, or his attorney speak in just a minute. But I think the, it probably should state what we have here from Town Council, is that based on this information, we have, the, the board has the, is authorized to disapprove the renewal application. They can accept the renewal application and then table decision to approve or disapprove until no later than December 31st. Or we can have a conditional approval, which would be for whatever time we approve. It could be 60 days. Imagine if we wanted to, it could go 90 days also. The time that he mentions here is 60 days. And if that time, if the approvals, if the discrepancy is not fixed, the liquor license would, at that point, would expire. So without the liquor license, without this fix, are they not in business at all?
Opens up people.
Yeah. It's just that the liquor license is the one thing that's, they're asking for now.
Well, they're asking you for a liquor license. That has really nothing to do with me.
Yeah.
They can still operate. They can serve food. You're telling them, based on the mass law, you're telling them they can't have the liquor license, because I, and along with the fire department, have signed off on a certificate of inspection.
And Town Council is basically telling us right here that we can condition such condition, we can condition such situation as a part of the liquor license. That was the thing I needed to know, was if they could actually be linked together. I think, being that, well, again, we'll get to the applicant in just a minute. But I think being that 365 days of, of the same period that they had to do it, I think there's some time to, here to, to motivate the owner. But I'd like to let Mr. Eller, or his attorney, speak now, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. My name is Brian Burke. And Greg asked me to come here today to speak with you, if you had any questions. First, in regards, I'll address one of the issues about the timeframe of the 365 days. I don't think it was anything intentional or malicious on his part. I think it was just an oversight, to be very honest with you. I, he does agree that it was brought to his attention when he first opened the restaurant, the pub. However, he left the responsibility of that to one of the contractors, and they were going to work it out together. And it's something that just, in the back of their mind, it never came to the front. It wasn't something that was being brought to their attention repeatedly, that I'm aware of. But I do know that it's something that was just neglected out of, out of innocence, and not anything that was malicious. I filed the application today. I found out about it as quickly as I can. I pulled the application together. It was, it's a five-page application. It has 11 attachments to it. It also has three videos, seven photographs, and a whole application on the, on a, on a disc that's required. So it was a bit cumbersome to pull together over the timeframe of the holidays and everything. However, I did have a conversation with a gentleman with the, at the Architectural Access Board. He represented to me that if we got it in today, they would be able to have it on their December 16th agenda, and that we would have word on December 17th. When I called him today to confirm that, that... When I called him today to confirm that, they had placed it on the January 6th date. So we're on January 6th for the next meeting. I've asked if they could pull it back to the 16th. And he said that he would inquire of his boss to see if that was possible. I'm not sure if it's going to be absolute or not, but I know that the January 6th date is the furthest date out. We would be notified on January 7th of the date, whether or not it was approved or not. I have every inclination, after my discussion with this gentleman, that the percentage of 1% is an acceptable parameter, that they do allow for that. In regards to the date, we should find out right away. I will tell you that it's a building that was built in 1840, and it has a lot of difficulty with upgrading some of the requirements that we have today, based on the fact of the building's age and how it was designed, and how it's been used over the last several, you know, 100 and something years. So it's very difficult. And I will, I will say that I did have a conversation with Roland about the plan. He gave it to me this morning. I looked at it. I also spoke with the architect about it. And it was interesting that the ramp, the way it's designed now, it's at the maximum amount of space that can be taken between the entrance to the pub and the entrance to the pizza place. And there's a third door between the two, which requires a four-inch riser. Correct me if I'm wrong, Roland, but we have the four-inch riser based on that. And then the grade that it is, is just the 1% off where it ends. The cost, the projected cost to move the door, some of the heating system, the electrical system and plumbing, and to put the ramp up to grade without any type of variance would be over 50% of what it costs to do the whole pub. So it's, it's really cost prohibitive in that sense. That's why we think we will be successful with getting a variance, based on the information I provided. I can say that we also installed a doorbell at the base of the ramp, and we've instituted a protocol for anybody that needs assistance to press the button. And it will alert people in both the sub shop and in the pub itself that someone needs assistance outside. So we're hoping that that will be an additional, added remedy to the problem. Even though we may be provided with a variance, it'll be, still be something that's there. And we're hoping that in the interim, while we're waiting for this variance, that the board will entertain your option three, which would be to approve, approve it conditionally, give us 60 days to get our variance, and for us to come back here and give it to you so that you'll be comfortable with the fact that we are up to snuff on this. And again, I just want to reiterate that I, I think Greg's doing a great job. I think he's got his hands filled with what's going on at the pub and the common and the pizza place, between running two businesses, essentially, and dealing with a lot of new things that come before him, especially when he has to tackle issues of licensing and proper service of people. And I know that there's some things that have come before you already. But I think he's doing his best, and I think sometimes he's a bit overwhelmed with this. But it was not out of any malicious intent or trying to dupe anybody or anything like that. When he, when it was brought to his attention, when Roland went there and said, "You haven't fixed the ramp," the first thing he did was called me, and he tried to get an application together as quickly as we could. And I believe the application that you have, I'm not certain, but I know that the fact that it's, doesn't have the letter that you raised, there is a letter on the application that I did today that was submitted to, to the, to the board in Boston. It had everything all checked off. So I'm certain to 100% that it's there, and if you don't have it, I have a copy of it right here, probably. This was the actual letter that was submitted today with the complete package.
Sure thing.
So with respect to the landlord-tenant relationship, is there something specifically disclosed in the lease which talks about who's responsible for the repair or the remedy of the ramp?
The, because it's a tenant, and he, and they have the responsibility, it's a triple-net lease type situation. And because the tenant is the one that's proposed to have this as a pub on the common, it's his responsibility, the tenant, to take care of all that. The board in Boston requires that the owner, because they own the property, have an agent designated for them to pursue the variance. It's in his interest to do so, so the owner just grants authorization to the tenant to do so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure. Go ahead.
When you submitted the application, did you inquire if they would tell you if the application was complete? Did they do an administrative review of the application?
Well, it's pretty cumbersome. Even though it's 16 pages long with attachments, they also have to review the CD that goes with it. But I'm pretty convinced that it's, that it's covered. And I was a little surprised, actually, when Roland said that it didn't have an occupancy agreement. And I will be talking with him, and I will call them and correct it myself, so that he doesn't have to respond to it. I thought that there was an occupancy agreement. Maybe I misread the, the, what he has listed, posted at the pub. I thought that was the occupancy agreement, but I, but it's not.
No, it's not. It's a certificate of occupancy, which is required every year.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on the board? Okay. Does anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
Well, I think, based on what we've heard, I wouldn't be opposed to approving with conditions in regards to the expiration of the, expiration of the license if, in fact, the variance is not granted. So I would, I would not be opposed to approving the license with that condition. If it doesn't get approved on, whether it's the January 6th?
6th.
Or the 16th of December, if you get it moved back, we give them maybe till January 8th, 9th, or that following Monday, whatever, maybe, instead of the 60 days.
Build it a little more time, just, just because you don't know if there's a snowstorm or whatever, but maybe give it 60 days.
Do they meet once a month?
They meet once, well, they do meet once a month, yes.
Well, if there's something like snowstorm, I think that could be, you know, we could, you know, if that, if something was extended because of that, we could hear that on then, you know, at another, at a future meeting if there was another reason to extend it. But so you are hearing on the 16th, and we're meeting on the 16th. Are you expected to hear on the 16th or the 17th?
17th. At the early, that's if they can move it to the December date versus the January date.
And Keith, what are we proposing? 27?
For...
Meetings in January?
13th and 27th.
13th and 27th.
So let's go to the 27th. No one objects? Was that an objection, or?
You're free to make your motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the pub on the commons.
You want to go?
Yeah, alcoholic beverage, class one.
Yeah, I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve annual renewal, renewal of the license for Common Foods, Inc., Gregory P. Ether's manager, DBA, Littleton Sub Shop, AKA Pub on the Common, 486 King Street. The board hereby adopts option number three, as outlined by Town Council, which is, I will read it as soon as I get to it. Board of Selectmen grant the approval of the commons application, Common Foods application for renewal by December 31, 2013. Under this option, the board of selectmen should work with Roland Burney at the fire department to grant temporary liquor license for an agreed amount of time, which is 60 days, or through January 27th. If the improvements are not made within that set time, the temporary liquor license would lapse, and the Common Foods would need to apply for a new license in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 138, subsection 15A.
Okay. Motion been made in sec, motion been made? Is there a sec? There's motion been made and seconded to approve the liquor license for Littleton Sub Shop and Pub on the Common, temporary liquor license with a period of 27 days.
Through January 27th.
Through January 27th, 2014.
Okay, 2014. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Alex, you going to vote?
He did.
I did, Paul.
Oh, I didn't?
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Let's, 7:30, we're scheduled for Park and Rec.
What about the other licenses?
Oh, yeah. So intent on keeping this on schedule, I'm sorry.
People here that are interested.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any discussion on these other licenses? The detective still here?
They're all, they're all set. All their positions set, their buildings are set with as needed.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the annual renewal of licenses for alcoholic beverages in class one and two automotive, for the calendar year 2014. The list of said licenses attached herein.
With the exception?
With the exception of the one we just discussed.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Okay. Anything else? Oh, we got automotive now? Anything else? Any other licenses? That's it?
All booked.
All right. Now we go to Park and Rec, right?
Yep.
All right. Do you want to come to order? You want to, do you have a quorum? Brian, or Gary?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you in session?
Did you call yourselves to order? Is this a question?
No, we did, huh?
You can do it now.
We'll watch. You can do it now, you can...
Well done.
Okay. Okay, so this is a joint meeting with Parks and Rec and Board of Selectmen to discuss many things: mission, finances, goals, and facilities. Would you like to open?
I'll start with the easy stuff, and then I'll let Kate explain everything else.
Okay.
Our main goal, we come to this originally, has changed over the last month with all these other things, with the Ains Playground, and now talk of the new fire station, maybe Morgan Property, that we have discussed a few years, or years or so back, about making deals into that. I guess we're just where, I know where the plan was 18 years back to make us self-sufficient. And we're finding out we can't do that. We just can't do that. We're running bare bones. An example, just this summer, we had to update and have life jackets for everybody at the beach. We didn't have the money. You know, luckily, we have Kate, that does grants and begs, borrows, and steals, whatever she has to do, she got it done. But we're running out of those type of options to beg people for money, to keep programs or keep the beach open. And we'd like the town to help, you know, this is a town department, to help supplement us and, and keep us going. We're, you know, we're, it's harder for us, because I know, because we're, we can make funds. But we're at the point where, we're maxed out, is how much we can charge. We're losing people because they don't want to pay the high sticker price for the beach, or the high prices for camp. We're down on, I don't know how many percent. So we're just looking for some help from the town. This is a town department, and we'd like to be somewhat funded as a town department.
I see a couple things a little differently. I don't think it's, you're looking for help. I mean, you're, I think, in my opinion, we're looking, this is a town department, it's not help, it's like, we need to fund this department. Because you can bring in money, you augment what the town gives you. I don't, you know, I see it as, this should be, this is funding, you should be funded by the town with augmented by fees. So it's not really help, this is something that you, that you need.
I'm just not being nice about it.
No, I know, I know, I know. And I, sometimes you're too nice. The other thing I see, I see, on the other side of the coin is, I see you say you can't be self, self-sufficient. Well, yeah, you could, if you wanted to charge more and more for fees and increase fees. I mean, I think that's something we've discussed before, that there's a flip side to being self-sufficient at this point.
But if we're being self-sufficient and run as a business, when we make hard decisions that is not popular, we can't have feedback from, you know, the department saying that's wrong, where they're just throwing out, you know, we're crying poor mouth, that we have to shut down the beach, saying we had to shut down the beach, we didn't have the life jackets. You know, we had to cut back hours.
Yeah.
And there was a big uproar about it.
Yeah.
Well, we can't have it both ways.
Right, yeah.
So with respect to the life jacket purchases, that was state mandated, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So there was no way that we could say no to that? And you needed to come up with $3,000, there and abouts, to have 150 life jackets there for all potential swimmers? So we get these unfunded mandates from the state, which then you have to come up with funds generated through beg, borrowing, and stealing.
Being a really sweet gal. Which we did. Which we are lucky that we were able to have somebody, a gentleman who runs the Dunkin' Donuts franchises in Littleton is very charitable, and he was looking for something. So now the life vests will say Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, the orange, with a bit of donuts and coffee on it.
Wear a donut, eat a donut.
Yeah. Okay. So how about the year going forward? Did you want to, did you want to explain anything, or give us any thoughts on the budget coming forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's been this, this transition period, at least over the last several years, where, you know, Park and Rec was a certain way, probably, you know, maybe 10 years ago, and then we, you know, I think about about five or six, almost six years ago. And we're kind of, you know, maxed out, like Gary said, of where we can charge people. In 2010, just to take an example, we upped the beach fee $5, and then again in 2012, and now it's $55 for residents to park at the beach. And there was a lot of backlash for that. This year, we saw a 12% decrease in the amount of beach stickers that we sold. So that's essentially a 12% decrease in hours that we can pay for. We aren't allowed to charge for people to walk in to the beach, which is probably more than 50% of the foot traffic there is walking in. But to go back to the life, I mean, the life jacket, it's called Christians Law, and it says that we have to account for every swimmer or bather on the beach. So if you were to walk your dog, not on the beach, but in the parking lot, we have to account for you, even if you're not going to be swimming, you have to have a life vest available. There was a lot of lobbying through the Mass Rec Association to try to stop this from going through, but, but it did go through. So now we're kind of faced with the issue of where to store all these vests, because that comes with an expense as well. And, I mean, that's just one, one small part of it. I know we were here probably eight or nine months ago, and it was, you know, I gave you a bunch of data, and where we are relative to the town and the area. And I think that with the programs that we run, we are able to be self-sustaining for those programs. So if community education is running 15 or 50 classes, rather, a season, those classes pay for themselves, and they subsidize the director of community, who's also the assistant director for the town. But it's the position of the director, which is my position, and the parks maintenance, that we are hitting a stone wall for, because there are administrative duties over and above, you know, what we can charge for. And we don't charge people to walk in to park properties. And frankly, if we did, I'm not sure people would pay. And, I mean, it's a quality of life issue. So we were here talking about, you know, where, where do you see us as a mission? What do you see as, as the goal for the department? I know that our goal has been, before my insistence, was to increase the quality of life through, you know, excellent facilities and quality programming, which is accessible to all people. If we're forced to charge, it's not going to be accessible to all people. And, you know, we're going to miss the mark on, on facility maintenance as well.
Sure. Sure thing.
I'm a strong believer in the program, you know that. I've been there quite a bit, and I see it's always like a beehive. The question I have, since you've been, or say, let's say, the last 10 years, do you have it written down, the in...
And, you know, we're going to miss the mark on facility maintenance as well.
Chair. I'm a strong believer in the program, you know that, and I've been there quite a bit, and I see it's always like a beehive. The question I have, since you've been, or say, let's say, the last 10 years, do you have it written down, the increase in programs that you're offering, and how that might correspond to the amount of staff you had to change during that time? Because what you have right here is what you need in the future, but it'd be nice to have the history. We ran 24 programs 10 years ago, now we're running this, and because of that, the staff had to change.
Kind of a unique animal, and yeah, the short answer is yes, and I can get it. The longer answer is that we keep having these merges, so, you know, 10 years ago, Parks and Rec was just Parks and Rec, it wasn't Parks, Rec, and Community Ed. Community Ed was a member school, I'm sure that you know that. And so they had their own staff member, now that staff member is a recreation staff member. There was a director and two administrative assistants, paid for partially through funds and partially through programs. And we got rid of the administrative assistant positions, because it was my feeling that we were better served by having programmers, since we all share the administrative duties. If someone eats a coffee, we do it ourselves. The phone is answered primarily by the three people who do the programming. The person who answers the phone for three seasons also runs the summer camp. Another one runs the middle school program and the after-school program, the other one runs the beach. So we used to have an aquatics director, we don't have that anymore. We used to have a camp director, we don't have that anymore. So as far as, you know, full-time staff, we've changed the names, but I think that the increase has only been with Drivers Ed, which Drivers Ed is, we didn't have Drivers Ed, and in 2009, we started it. And so that right now has a part-time person year-round who's 19 hours. That person used to be 32 hours, and we reduced the hours just simply because the health insurance premium was high, and the program didn't have that much demand, but we're making it work with the 19 hours, and then we have four part-time drivers at 10 hours or less. So, again, those are the things, you know, when Drivers Ed wasn't making as much money to subsidize the, you know, the benefits, that onus isn't on the town, it's on us, we had to adjust the program. So I think that what I'm asking for, and I think what we're talking about, are things that we really, you know, believe should be part of the town's responsibility for the department.
Well, yeah, go ahead. No, I've just spoken, I think, I think there is, this is something that we have to keep accessible to everybody. And I think it should be part of the, a portion of the funding should be from the budget at least, yeah.
We gave away about $8,000 in scholarship funds, and so that's not like dollar for dollar. I'm saying that we didn't collect fees.
Right.
For $8,000. So there is other avenues to go through, but those people that need the scholarships, it's not like they just come in and ask. I mean, there's a process, and I have the sliding scale that the IRS puts out every year, and we ask for, you know, all the proper documentation. But that's what I'm talking about, about accessibility. It's not just the physical, but.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, that's accessibility, yeah.
And I think part of it is just, you know, do we want that as a community? I mean, clearly, I do, honestly, I wouldn't be doing it, but.
Yeah.
So along Joe's request, I'd like to see what's your programs you've added, and, you know, the good ones, the bad ones. You know, where are the winners, and where are the ones that aren't doing so well? And have a discussion about why they're not doing so well, and.
Well, they're gone if they're not doing well.
Okay.
We don't have any losers, no losers, because if they're not turning a profit, and it can't be adjusted, and they're not making their expenses, then.
Then it kind of goes against you saying you need more money, so.
Well, no, it doesn't, because my salary isn't generated from program revenue predominantly. I work on things that are non-program related.
So I guess, I guess what I'd like to see is a breakdown of your programs. I see the, just a spreadsheet of expenses and salaries and stuff like that, but along Joe's lines, you know, what are your programs out there, what is the income to expense ratios?
Because, I mean, I did bring this, you know, several months back, I mean, I can bring it again.
Yeah.
No, no, but from past meetings, I.
What kind of program, give me an example, one or two programs that were not winners, that you had to cut? Is there any?
Five percent is one. It was huge, and then the class sizes decreased, and we weren't collecting enough money to pay the benefits package, the salary package was covered, so we reduced it to a non-benefit program, and now it's fine.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I think one of the things that you brought up during the budget hearing was, and I don't think that's clear tonight, so I want to make sure that's where you still want to go. You want to separate administrative costs from program costs. And it's fully your intent to have all programs pay for themselves. Where you want the help is in the administration level, at your level, and the people that are not delivering programs, they're administering the entire department, is that correct?
Correct, yes, and that would only be my position.
And what's that number?
And the parks maintenance.
Basically, for Kate's salary, there's another $40,000 that would need to be appropriated to fund the position fully. Right now, we fund about half of it. In addition to that, there is consideration being requested for a capital outlay account for equipment, in the amount of $22,000, which is for, I believe, the slave rent equipment at the beach. And then capital outlay improvements, which is for two things, $15,000 for general maintenance of equipment, in fields, and whatever needs to be maintained. And another $5,000 for the boathouse repair and maintenance. So in total, it's about $82,000 difference that they're requesting over what we're funding currently.
And what's the current budget?
Currently, we appropriate about $40,000 in salary, and then indirect costs and benefits that are about $6,000.
So those capital expenses are one-time cost?
The $15,000 would be an annual cost.
What is the 15 grand for?
That's for general maintenance of recreation facilities, so it'd be like for 300 King Street, or any of the other major facilities.
Well, I, I guess we get Jim here, who will be able to speak to cutting of the grass and maintaining the parks. So, does that go to Jim, or what do you, what do you pay for that?
We pay, Park and Rec raises $35,000 a year from fees to pay for everything that is in personnel.
Fees from soccer registration?
Correct, but we're getting some pushback there, because the fees are over and above maintaining their playing field.
This $15,000, a good example, a recent example, is the Aiden's Playground that was gifted to the town, and assumed by Park and Rec. They've never maintained that facility in the past. It needs to be maintained. You know, it's a structure that needs to be sprayed.
Well, and I mean, that's the issue with the boathouse, it's leaking, and.
Well, that's a capital, that's a capital improvement, so that's not an.
But ongoing maintenance of the boathouse would mean that it probably, hopefully, wouldn't come to this crisis situation, which is, we can't store anything in there because it leaks. You know, I mean, we're talking about things that, really, things that you would do, I mean, if you think about your home, you do annual maintenance to that, we have buildings and facilities that need annual maintenance. Playground safety fiber, there's a playground that went in on a grant three and a half years ago at Fay Park. One of the people, Aaron and I shoveled the bark mulch to put that in, and I've never been able to fund to replace it. You know, $380 to $480, but it needs it this year, because it needs to be an inch and a half of compacted playground safety fiber to meet the standards. Someone falls and gets hurt, I mean, that's on the record, because I have to do the inspections. We don't have the proper amount, it's a falling hazard, we need it. I can't charge soccer for, I can, I can, but they're not happy.
So these facilities are facilities that don't have any income associated with them.
Right, I got, yeah, yeah. I'm just looking forward where the $15,000 was, what it was all about. I think that would be very helpful for us to see, you know, what is, what is that.
Well, it's in the, I mean, you can see from our budget numbers that we spent $42,000 in maintenance last year. I'm only going to raise 35 this year from, from the athletic leagues. So there leaves a hole there of what we spent last year, that's, you know, money that I'm not going to have, therefore, I have to cut, you know, $12,000 worth of maintenance. Well, the first place that that is cut from is not athletic fields, because they're the ones paying for it. It has to be the things that are.
I guess, those, as you said, is, the parks that don't have admission fees, you know, what are they in? What are the maintenance, that's all I'd be looking for. Along with what Joe was saying, those, the programs that you're doing, and what is the revenue? Revenue and expenses for each, for each one?
But Kate, you're talking about things like Bumblebee Park, Fay Park, 300 King Street. And having been the president of the Castle and the Trees, you can put a box there and ask people to pay for it. By and large, you're not getting money when people walk in to pay for those things and to underwrite those costs. And if we as a community are going to endorse being outdoors and breathing fresh air, it seems to me as though we as a board should support the ideas that Kate and the commissioners are bringing in front of us tonight.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying. And I, no, I think that's where we're at, we just need, we want to know exactly what we're supporting. That's, I think, I think I've seen support from everybody, I think, I don't, I don't leave a state of this, admittedly, it's everybody else.
I think that's exactly where I was going, because we have certain costs that we as a community would want to have or pay for, because we want it as part of this community.
Yeah.
And that they will not be able to pay for themselves. And I think we have to define that line, and then decide if we want to fund it. And that's, I think that's what everybody's asking for here, is where is that line? What is that amount of money going to look like? And, you know, I will, you know, want the assurances that there can't, you know, I want to see the definite ones that, that where there's no possibility of generating revenue off of them. I don't want to see a situation where you're trying to generate revenue off one thing to support another. Let them all stand on their own merit, and we'll go from there, and look at it that way. Because I think there's a certain amount this community wants.
I agree.
And what else can we do?
Yeah, I agree, and I think we go one more, one step further, like, there may be a program that's valuable that just doesn't pay for itself, and there has to be some sort of revenue sharing. So I'm not ready to, you know, start making any decisions yet. But it sounds like we want to continue this discussion.
Absolutely.
With just no more detail, we can, you can talk to Kate and discuss what exactly you want to see, or we can get in touch with anybody.
She'll probably ask the finance committee.
Yeah. And again, you know, going through the budget process on that Saturday, the half a million dollars plus the school was looking for. You know, it's just, everything keeps building and building and building. So we need to take a town top view of 15,000 up, 15,000 feet up, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman, did you have anything you wanted to add, or to discuss?
We, we've only been just recently made aware of the most recent request, although we're not unaware of the issues that Park and Rec raised over the past couple of years. So we don't have a consensus opinion on it, we're kind of chewing through the information, same as you folks are. But I mean, it does represent a change in how that position, I mean, it's the director's position's not new, and it has been funded along with the other, the other staff positions from programming. So it's not like a new item that we have to take, it's just a new way of looking at an existing item. There had been a long-term plan toward self-sufficiency consciously adopted by the town, that was kind of halted, as we all know, at a point when the funding level was about $40,000 from the town, I mean, halted from going down toward projected zero. And, you know, the Park and Rec's making their case, you know, to change that dynamic. Whatever decision the town makes that leads to more town funding in addition to the revenue generated, has to come from somewhere. So, I mean, in terms of it being an ongoing operating expense, it's a collective decision that probably warrants, you know, an ongoing discussion, but whatever, you know, it's not, money's not going to come out of the sky, it's going to come from somebody.
But this is the first year that the director's salary wasn't subsidized by the town. This is the first fiscal year, because it was being cut, cut, cut. So last year, the amount that was appropriated was, yeah.
But we, it was never characterized, if there was any concession, that the town funding was dedicated to.
Right, right, right.
So you're not having that charged to that.
Yeah, no, but the funding has gone down, so also, when you say, you know, it's going to come from somewhere, well, it, the problem is that it went somewhere, and it may need to come back.
That was part of the plan, long before I got here, and before most members here did.
Yeah, and, and like you said, there's no buckets, like, this money is for this, and that's something that is being, something that's being proposed now. So, yeah, go ahead.
Just for sake of real numbers, do you know per thousand dollars what Park and Rec is costing residents?
Under $3.
Under $3.
Per thousand.
Per thousand.
Oh, their tax bill.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tarbox, did you have something? Are you speaking as FinCom or as resident?
FinCom.
Okay, thanks.
But not from any consensus that we've taken, just to remember. With due respect, the question of what it costs per resident, I think, is misleading, because anything can be broken down to a small number. We're already, we're looking at a town deficit already of 164 to 1.2 million, coming up with, you know, another 50, 100,000. That has to come from someplace else, and between us, our boards, we have to figure out where it would come from if we're going to do it here. The second thing is, I'd like to say, capital requests should go through the normal capital process, just so they can be vetted against anything else. And from, coming away from the meeting that we had with the school committee, the permanent municipal building committee, and the capital survey folks, we had a lot of discussion about maintenance, and how proper maintenance can lead to fewer building, large capital item replacement. And there was a consensus that we're really not doing, that we're not doing enough maintenance, and that each department is doing their own sort of ad hoc approach to maintenance. So I'm just saying, I know I'm speaking to the choir here, that as a town, we need to tackle maintenance as a town, and not so ad hoc. And that may get us out of some of these individual issues.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. So I think what we're going to see is, we're going to see a continuation of this. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McCray, I didn't see your hand there.
FinCom. Let's not get hung up on this false choice, because costs are expanding for this year. School might want more money, somebody else might want more money. We can't consider Park and Rec needs also. It may be that Park and Rec's needs are superior to something the school needs.
Or any other department, let's not get a turf war here.
Choice thing going here, all right?
Yeah, okay. So I think Jim and Kate, if you want to work together and get some numbers, I think what, I think we're wanting to see is a history, say, five years of programs, costs, and revenues.
I wouldn't go five, I'd just go three.
Okay. It's two more clicks. Okay, that three is fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's get on for January, first meeting in January?
13th. Or is it the 14th?
13th, 13th. I said first meeting in January.
Keith, is the 13th the legal holiday?
Oh, the 20th is the holiday.
The 20th.
The 20th.
All right. All right. Thanks. Huh, thanks? Yeah. Okay. At 8 o'clock, we now have Finance, School Committee, and more 2015 budget planning. If schools and finance want to come to, come into session, feel free.
We are already in session.
You're in session, okay?
Schools in.
Schools in session, okay. Schools in. All right. So, we're here to talk about total budget, and I had to see some, that's capital, that's next, all right. So, does either Finance or School Committee want to start, or anything?
Well, I, I do know that Bonnie has a pretty thorough PowerPoint, that probably is not a bad place to start. We, of course, most of us were able to participate on the November 16th presentation from the various departments on their budget requests. Everybody's got their book, Brian Gutler, Prof. there, I'm sure everybody studied it in detail. So we're at the point now where, you know, we're looking at the projected operating deficits.
Yes.
Not unusual this time of year, and we really need to get prioritization. And I think that, I speak for the FinCom on this one, you know, maybe after Bonnie makes her presentation, we'd very much like to get a, you know, some discussion with the Selectmen about what your priorities are on the budget, so we can start making some decisions.
And that was something that was on our agenda last time, and then we talked about it very briefly, but then we were waiting for this information from Bonnie before we could start giving some projections. They just came to session, I'm sorry, they just.
No problem, I missed nothing.
So, yeah. So Bonnie, would you like to go into your presentation?
I'd love to. Based on the meeting that we held on.
Yeah, no, okay, I'm going to look over there.
Based on the meeting that we held on November 16th at the police station, the joint budget review with the School Committee and Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. What I did is I took the requests that were submitted by the departments, and summarized the differences between the level staffing budgets that were submitted, and the mission request budgets that were submitted, by function, so that we can kind of go through them and see what the difference is. It's a little easier than looking, drilling into the details of the documents. the level staffing requests, which again is no new staffing, no additional personnel, represents an increase of just over one point two million, or a three and a half percent increase over fiscal fourteen. The mission budget requests represents just shy of two point four million, or six point six percent over fiscal two thousand and fourteen, operating budgets. And I know that this slide is probably a little small for the screen, but it gives you the breakdown by function of the, the one point two million on the level staffing budget summary. With this level staffing summary, it's, it's about a three and a half percent increase, we have a deficit right now of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And there are some assumptions in there that I'll get through by department that may push this to a larger deficit. On the next slide, you can see on the mission requested budget summary, the two point four million increase, or just shy of two point four million increase, creates a deficit of one point two eight oh million for fiscal fifteen. So that's a, that's a large gap, so there's a lot of items that need to be reviewed and will not make it into the scenario, obviously. To start by function, general government, which includes all of the financial offices, the board of selectmen's offices, permitting and land use. The level staffing budget increases by sixty-two thousand, or just over three point one percent. There are no additional hours increases, there's no additional staff, no additional benefits being added to the program, it's just any step increases that might be due to the employees that are doing them. Within the mission budget request, under general government, there are some additional personnel and operating expense changes. It's a, just about a ninety-four thousand dollar increase over fiscal two thousand and fourteen, or four point eight percent. It includes the step increases that were mentioned in the previous slide. In addition to that, it includes fifty-eight hundred in tax title expenses based on the current caseload. Tax title is the delinquent tax accounts that are, are being worked out. There's a two thousand dollar increase in the collector's postage, which is currently underfunded, primarily to incorporate an eight point seven percent increase coming in January of this fiscal year. There's also an increase in the conservation assistant hours from twenty to twenty-four weekly, about forty-eight hundred dollars a year. That won't change the benefit level, because at, at a twenty-hour-per-week position, it's already eligible for benefits. And in addition, we're going to analyze this, but we may be able to, to offset fully that forty-eight hundred from the wetland fee increases that they're making. We're going to analyze the, the fees over the next few months to see if it can be supported. The other request is an eighteen thousand dollar request to add a fifteen-hour-per-week non-benefit position in IT, primarily to support the public safety needs and their software components that they have.
It doesn't show any other possible staffing. I don't know what you showed there.
That's it, yes. That summarizes all of them within general government. And then we'll go to public safety next. Public safety, which would incorporate police, fire, building inspector, any, any other type of EMS, public safety functions. There's a few changes there. In the level staffing budget, it's a ninety-six thousand dollar increase over fiscal fourteen, or just shy of three and a half percent. It includes the step increases or any contractually obligated increases for the bargaining units. There are no additional personnel changes, with the exception of one. The police department is requesting to increase their patrol staff from sixteen to seventeen, directly paying that from a reduction in overtime. So they're not, the budget to keep the sixteen at the sixteen level would be the same as keeping it at seven, or changing it to seventeen, because of the overtime savings. The cost would be the potential increase to an additional set of benefits, which I've incorporated in the, the last slide for benefits. For public safety, mission budget, there's a lot of changes in this one to review, but it's a almost four hundred thousand, three hundred ninety-four thousand dollar increase over two thousand and fourteen, or fourteen percent. It does include the step increases, again, that I mentioned previously, and in addition to that, it would include another fifty-seven thousand in an increase into the police department budget to add another patrol officer to bring the force to eighteen, which puts them, I believe, at the level they were trying to get to in, that they had in two thousand and four. There's an eleven thousand dollar increase in the police budget for animal control services that are proposed, which could be offset by the dog licensing fees, if we fund it in that manner. There's a twenty-two thousand dollar approximate increase in police expenses for training, vehicle repair, and animal control costs, so this would be in the general expense budgets. A fifteen thousand dollar increase in dispatch salaries for additional training expenses, and a hundred and eighty-five thousand increase to add four full-time firefighter EMT positions. It is in here now, funded through the operating budget as the, as the proposal. There is a safer grant application in process impending. We have not received notification, but the chief has, is hopeful that we'll have something in January or February. No promises of that. Education, this is the one that I, I will apologize to the school department upfront. We, we don't have a school department budget at this point. The, the local appropriation for the school department is level funded at this point. The reason it's level funded is because we had an extra step payment that was budgeted this fiscal year, which is not necessarily due in the next fiscal year, so there's about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in there for that. But I know that they're drafting their, their budget requests now, so I'm hoping that we can update that. But any increase over the level funded appropriation that's, that's there will push the deficit to a larger amount. Within the Neshoba Tech budget, we have a twenty-eight thousand, or just shy of twenty-nine thousand dollar increase budgeted, which is conservative, it's about two point three percent increase. It could be more, it could be less, it depends on enrollment. We don't pick those figures for another few weeks.
Bonnie?
Yes?
Did I got to ask the school one question at the Saturday meeting? It was a seventeen point three million dollars?
Sixteen point nine.
Sixteen, where's Mike?
Right there.
Sorry, I'm working it. I thought you said seventeen point three, was that the mission budget?
Yeah, that's next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I put it here just as a placeholder.
Ah, shit.
There you go. That's the number.
So the number that we discussed, and again, we, we don't have the final details, so I'm, I apologize again for not...
No, no apologies at this point. Because you actually already explained it when you talked on the show Valley Tech, it might be higher, it might be low, because we don't have the numbers.
Right.
So just like the Noshaw Valley, we don't have the numbers because of the education issues.
Correct.
We don't have it for the school department also. It's the exact same reason.
So what I did put in was the, the numbers that were discussed at the hearing, which totaled five hundred and fifty thousand, which is about a three point three percent increase over the appropriation, not the total budget, but the town appropriation for fiscal fourteen. And what was also discussed was there's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in special ed costs, and a seventy thousand dollar increase in transportation costs that, that make up part of that.
Make up part of the five fifty?
Part of that, yes.
Right.
And again, so more information will be, will come in with that.
Yeah.
Then we go to public works, which would incorporate the highway department, the cemetery department, anything that is infrastructure. Their level staffing budget represents a fifty-four thousand dollar increase over two thousand and fourteen, or three point six percent. It does include all of the step increases due in fiscal two thousand and fifteen, and there is no staffing changes, no additional bodies or hours. On the mission budget, we are waiting for the completion of the study that's being done on the highway department, the management study by the Collins Center. That is expected possibly by the end of this month, at the beginning of January. So we, we ask the highway commissioner not to submit a mission budget request without that data, it would be premature to add anything to that. But again, any additional costs or expenses associated with that will add to the deficit.
This is the first I'm hearing about this Collins Management Center. Is that, what is that involved?
It's a review of the entire highway function and public works function.
And how's that, how'd that get funded?
We funded it out of the operating budget. It was something that we, I believe we brought back in the spring, the late spring, maybe in June. Yeah, it was, it was a few months ago that it was brought.
Might have been a Celtics game that night.
Oh, I don't know.
Not in June.
Hockey that night.
Okay, there you go.
No, but we, we had indicated that we would be undertaking that study before filling any supervisory position on highway.
I mean, it's possible to keep track of everything, but it, it sounds familiar to me.
So that'll be forthcoming, and when we have that completed, we'll bring that forward for the board to review. Additionally, under public works, we have it kind of separated out from the general operations as roadway and storm and wastewater management. Both the level staffing and the mission budget requests include a fifty, fifty-eight hundred dollar increase in the wastewater and stormwater costs, primarily due to state mandates on stormwater management and monitoring. Basically, if you don't fund it, they're going to fine us in the amount that it costs to expense it and pay for it anyway, so it's just, it's a fifty-eight hundred dollar increase to, to manage it. And also a two hundred and four thousand dollar increase in the roadway plan, and it's, it's in conjunction with a million dollar borrowing authorization for the new estate road repairs in two thousand and fifteen. This is part of the plan that was adopted several years ago and was programmed into the operating budget as part of the ten-year roadway improvement plan. We monitor it annually, so we wait for this. Health and human services. This would include the elder and human services department, board of health, and anything of that nature. The level staffing budget would include an eleven thousand eight hundred dollar increase over two thousand and fourteen, or six point eight two percent. It includes the step increases due in fiscal two thousand and fifteen. The reason it seems a little higher than the other departments at the six point eight percent is because it includes a fifty-three hundred dollar, almost fifty-four hundred dollar increase in health assessments, which have been flat the last five or six years. So it's, it's not unexpected to have an increase, but it just happened to hit this year. The mission budget represents a twenty-five thousand dollar increase over fourteen, or a fourteen point eight percent increase. Again, the step increases are included, but this would also include a thirteen thousand dollar, seven hundred and ninety dollar increase in the outreach coordinator's hours. That would get the outreach coordinator from thirty hours a week to forty hours a week. Ten hours is currently supported by grants, with twenty hours supported by the general fund, so basically the impact of the general fund is that additional ten dollars.
And with the twenty hours supported by the general fund, that person is a benefited employee?
It's already a benefit eligible employee, so it will not affect the general fund. Action update. This would include park and rec, the library, and the library assessment for regional library services. Level staffing budget would increase by twenty-two thousand five hundred, or about three point three percent. The step increases would be included, and no additional headcount hours or changes in funding for the parking rec, or for the director. It does include a forty-nine hundred dollar increase in library expenses to maintain the certification, because any time you increase salaries, you have to maintain a certain level of expense corporation. The mission budget for the department would show an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or twenty-three percent. It also includes the step increases. It would include a seventy-eight thousand dollar increase to the library appropriation to open an, an additional five hours per week, as they had discussed at their budget hearing, and an additional fifty-six thousand to subsidy for park and rec, as we discussed Fringe benefits, under the level staffing, this would include any of the health insurance, any other insurance benefits, retirement benefits due to our employees. There's a four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase over fiscal two thousand and fourteen, or about seven and a half percent. Health insurance benefits are estimated at about a fourteen percent increase to allow for premium increases in employee migration, and OPED funding increases by ten percent for our fiscal policies that we adopted a number of years ago. And there's a six point four percent increase in retirement assessment. So when you, when you calculate all that out together, it's about a seven and a half percent increase, which is pretty conservative for fringe benefits. The mission budget would include five hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase, which is almost a nine percent increase over fourteen. It includes the additions to the level staffing increases, which are four additional sets of health insurance benefits for the firefighter EMT staffing additions, an additional set of health insurance benefits to cover the additional patrol officer, and an additional set of health insurance benefits to cover requested increase in park and rec general fund subsidies. So, you know, it's a, it's a larger increase, but we're using the same assumptions in the budget as far as the fourteen percent increase in our insurance benefits. Debt service, this is one I, I think it's important to point out. Both the level staffing and the mission budget requests include some pretty significant, I think, paydowns for projects, which are good accomplishments. The first is two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the final paydown for the track improvement, which is done inside the levy, for the board's discussion. While this was a debt exclusion vote, we did fund it inside the levy limit. This is the final payment, so it'll be, it'll be done after this. If this were not spent here, it could be used for other capital, but it could not be used for other operating budget costs for our purposes. There's a hundred thousand dollars for the final paydown to the Foster Streets who were tying in, again, inside the levy limit. That was voted inside the levy limit also. And two hundred thousand for the first paydown, as I mentioned before, for the, the million dollar roadway plan borrowing, for the ten-year plan that we have in place. There'll be multiple short-term borrowings for the roadway plan coming forward in future years, but this is the first one that we executed about a year or so ago. And those are the summaries.
No, that's, that's a great summary. Kind of sitting on the outside, it probably sounds pretty dry, but I found it very helpful, interesting, very succinct, and to the point. I don't know if this board wants to comment on it now, or if we want to open up to the other committees that are in session here.
Love the committee stock, I guess. I would say both the committees have their discussions.
Okay, and then we'll get to, we'll try to have some talk about, because we, I know FinCom wants direction from us, or some thoughts on direction. Okay? Mr. Chairman?
I have no problem filling a void, but honestly, I think we'd really like to hear from you folks.
Okay.
I can only underscore what Bonnie mentioned, that, you know, we're looking at an operating deficit, even at the, at the level staffing level, a lot of the other requests are legitimate, they're good, but those are the tough decisions that have to be made.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think we, we need to establish what your priorities are, and then we just try to make it work. Later on in the cycle, we may find that, either on the revenue side or the fringe benefit or other cost side, things may change, but historically, Bonnie's numbers have been very good, so.
Okay. All right. Well, well, here's where I'm at. I think, I've said this before in other meetings, that, well, we all know that it's not the tax classification that increases taxes, this is where we increase taxes or where we can save taxes. So in the last few years, we've been, maybe not last year, but a few years, we've been looking at level funding or level staffing. And now we're at the point where, you know, we're not even looking at level funding, but we're looking at level staffing. But in my opinion, I don't think it's time to go and start looking at increasing, increasing costs. I think we're still not out of the woods, there could be more implications, and my position would be to, to support the level funding, and it's, it's going to be difficult because it's easy to say that, and then you look at some of the things that are funded under mission, and you think, oh, it'd be really nice to have that. But I just don't think we're out of the woods yet, and it, it's going to be difficult because there are other projects that I would like to support, but if I'm going to say that, I have to walk the walk, and if I'm going to talk the talk, I have to walk the walk, and I think that where I'm at is to support the, is to level, level staff. So with that, I'll open it up to other board members to voice their opinions.
I'll take, I, I guess, I'm, I'm on board with the level staffing also, but the, the major issue, obviously, is we'd like to see the school and what their budget looks like, that's almost fifty percent of the budget, or thereabouts. I think your, your point is well-taken. Every year, we sit down at that tax classification, and it's, it's a, it's difficult to always increase and keep increases. The past four years, it's, our tax rate has gone up almost twenty percent. So that's a big increase for everybody in town. So if we can live with the level staffing, I think that, that, that alone is what we should be looking at. And to see what the school is, I know the school's in talks with their unions, and, you know, that's something else that has to be addressed soon, so.
Okay. Anyone else want to take a few swings? Anyone else want to take a few swings?
Oh, you know, I wish there was a magic bullet to all of this, because, you know, in the mission budget, it's not, there's no bat in there, there's no, you know, pie in the sky stuff. People want real programs, real things, and you know what, the townspeople want that too. But I just can't see how we can get there. I don't see how we can overcome that deficit without making radical changes somewhere else. And I don't think what the townspeople would take much of a liking to is saying, well, we want an override to do it. And so I don't think we can go there. The biggest single driver of all this budget increase is employees. So I would caution that we look at that very carefully. Now, I always prioritize public safety and education as a place where, you know, you have to get, you have to get the job done. And, but no matter how you look at it, when we look at the mission budgets of any of those, we're talking some pretty hard-to-match increases.
Okay. What else?
I would just simply echo the same things that have been said. It's obvious that with the tax increases that Mr. Carr has mentioned in the last four years, it's getting to be an awful lot for certain residents to handle. Some of us, even citizens, have problems with what's happening, and so I don't see any choice. I mean, I think what was just said too, there are some outstanding things that should be happening that we should try to be doing, but right now, we don't have the opportunity to do it. So I'm in favor of level staffing.
When I went through the packet before tonight's meeting, I put a notation next to debt service, writing, what can we do about this? Can someone explain to me what we can do about the fact that we're paying for almost $4 million a year in debt service, and why we can't do something to cut into that?
Well, it would take, we could, we could take from the capital plan.
We review the debt service annually to see if there's opportunities for refunding or refinancing, and we just did one.
What was the refunding that we just did? Steve, can you give?
We did, well, yeah, the high school.
High school.
Yeah.
Saved $200,000 a year in debt service.
And can you tell us what's, briefly, what's on there, a few items that are on debt service that we can?
There's, in the debt service, there's about, it's about 50/50. There's about, oh, let's see, $1 million and a half that is inside the levy limit, and then there's about $2 million that's outside the levy limit, and then there's other short-term items. But it's the high school is the largest piece of debt service. We've got some repairs for the Shaker Lane School, the middle school, the police station, the Russell Street School. There's been a lot of, you know, building work that has been done in the last 10 years.
I mean, the way you control the debt service budget prospectively is by not doing projects that require borrowing.
Yeah. Sell naming rights or something like that, you know? Coca-Cola High?
We also have policies in place that when we reduce our, the debt that we have to pay down, we use that to pay down more debt. And so, I mean, that's why we were so adamant that when we did the refi, and there was this free money around, that we didn't spend it, that we used it to pay down. So we have policies, and we actually are reduced, I mean, I believe over the last number of years.
Yes.
The level of our debt relative to our total budget has been creeping down.
Yes, it has. And an example of the track is a good example to use. I mean, that was something that was planned to be long-term placed debt.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we opted not to. We paid it inside the levy. It's not going to be added. It will go away next year.
Right, and that $285,000, so that's on the cap plan, so that goes, we free up $285,000 in the cap plan next year, yeah, which could, if we could use capital expenditures rather than financing them.
Preventive maintenance.
And I mean, yeah, and other things like the fire truck a couple of years ago, that we buy, pay cash for a fire truck, which is...
Rather than borrow.
That's huge. That's huge. So I think...
We actively work to try and mitigate new borrowing and additional borrowing by managing the debt service that's rolling off annually to fund capital outright.
So did you get the message that there's a general understanding that the board supports level staffing? I mean, is there something more that you're looking for?
I heard that, and I appreciate the clarity of message. I think it's also worth pointing out on the debt service piece, that anything that appears in the budget is, you know, if it's a project of the town is otherwise going to support, it's not spending that was done above and beyond the levy limit. So it's, you know, anything that's appearing there that isn't, you know, it's not an override, it would have been even higher tax increases. So there's good news to the extent that you can fund capital programs under the levy limit, but it competes with the operational costs of departments within the levy limit. The other point I just want to add, you know, add in terms of kudos, before we drop this particular subject, our treasurer, Steve Vanoudy, deserves particular credit for making our debt costs about as low as they conceivably could be for the town of Littleton. The other point I'll just make, as you all went around the room, it almost sounded like there was a choice, you were looking at this as a choice, you could either do level funding or the mission budget. You can do anything in between you want, but anything you want, you know, it has to meet the bottom line somehow.
But my point was, if I'm going to preach for all the other town departments, I'd have to walk it too. So that's, it's a tough, it's tough for everybody. I can't, I can't say...
But if you see a need, that you just say, okay, this has to get done, then that's fine, you just have to offset it somewhere.
Right. Well, there's also, I mean, there's also, when you talk about level staffing, is there staffing that can be replaced at the same price as they're currently paying, and things like that? So there are wiggle room, but I think the message is clear, that we're looking at, you know, staffing.
Just one, oh, sorry. Just one other point about the capital and paying down the debt service, and as it comes off the death rolls, we do now have that Capital Enterprise Fund, where we can now take some of that funding and put it into that enterprise fund. So an unforeseen catastrophe, we don't have to even borrow anymore, so we're banking money.
Or foreseen.
Yeah, or foreseen.
Or foreseen, correct, correct. Or foreseen capital issues. So, you know, that's a, that's a huge benefit that we just did at this past town meeting, so that's really good.
John Kelly.
The bottom line here is that we're, you know, we have to have capital program, we have to have departments that operate. We're going to be up against this, we've been up against this since forever, and we're going to be up against it again, and, you know, what is the solution? Because this is the same discussion we had a year ago, and the year before that, and the year before that. And good people that are working hard for the town are coming here saying, boy, I'd like to do this, and that's great, you can't do it. And, you know, how do we find the solution? And I just wish there was something out there, you know? And I go back to, you know, what I've said often, is maybe some things can be regionalized, maybe some other things can happen to free up some of this, so that we can actually have a mission budget and carry it out.
Okay. John Kelly.
Chief.
Chief, go ahead. I know which way you're speaking. Go ahead. Go ahead, chief.
Just to get on the record, the police department is proposing the 17th officer to reclaim that position, which we lost in 2004, through our existing and proposed budget. So I'd like the board and the finance committee to consider that. And in that request, I would like you to remember the 20,000 vehicles a day that are going to be invited into our community through the point. And also, when and if 15 Great Road comes on board, which is twice as large as Ponceide Apartments, we will be adding another 360 calls for service to our logs. So I completely understand wanting to stand fast and try to do a cover-all policy, but in my experience, cover-all policies without the ability to take in individual considerations don't necessarily work. That's just my input, I appreciate it.
And the 360 is annually? So one holiday?
We currently go to Ponceide Apartments 180 times a year. So this is twice as big, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, part of that, and Mr. Glavy brought up the same point, part of that is, do we want to take it as the package of level funded as it is, or do we want to go through that and pick out certain things that we want to prioritize, which is what Chief Kelly's suggesting?
Well, I think what we want to do is send the message that the board supports level staffing, and as I said briefly, I didn't sum it up as succinctly as you did, but if, you know, if 17 costs the same as 16, that's almost a no-brainer. So, you know, as far as wiggle room, there may be wiggle room, but, you know, about level staffing, you know, we want to maintain the funding of level staffing. If, you know, some other department comes in and says, look, one person left, we're hiring two, no benefits, you know, things like that, there's always that appearance, that ability. But I think what we want to preach is across the board, and I think this board has to do with the departments that directly report to us, is that we need to, we need to walk that as much as we can, we need to follow our guidelines as much as we can. You know, public safety, this, I mean, you know, you've made great points on things that are, you know, valid concerns, you know, there's other departments that have those, you know, similar concerns too, so we just have to look at everything all at once.
I think level staffing is a general term, I think we all understand what you just pointed out, I think was pointed out by Mr. Glavy too, that we might have to make changes here and there, and it has to be offset someplace. And we realize those changes have to be made, but we're trying to, I guess it's a statement made by the board, we want to stay as close as we can to that point.
Mr. Chairman, did you have something I should hand up briefly?
Yes, please, for the schools. I think you realize, we do have the schools number, 1699. It's not a voted upon number, we don't vote upon it until March, so it's not an official request, because unlike departments, the school committee actually has to have a public hearing and a vote on that, and publicly present it to the town. That's why the 169 number may not be seen as an official number, but it is the level staffing number that we're seeking to keep the staffing levels at what we have for this fiscal year. To keep in mind too, is that two years ago, as we entered debt by 13 with many difficulties, we did cut staffing by five FTEs. So that was 125 down to 120. We made it 120 going into this fiscal year 15, so that is a level staffing number you all have to cope with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, seeing no further comments. Anything else from the board? I think we'll attack the cap plan and take a look at that at some meeting coming up soon. I don't want to go into it now, we've just received the final plan tonight, so I think we should look at that and maybe try to provide some direction at a future meeting.
Just one comment about the capital plan. At the meeting I talked about earlier with schools improvement, the school building committee, I could say that faster, the survey committee, the consultants brought in a very interesting database of all our capital systems, where they are in their lifecycle, expected costs, and a prioritization system. And we spoke informally about that it would be really nice to tie our current set of capital requests into the priorities developed by the consultants and their database. So I know we can't do that now, but I think we've got this huge database that tells us basically the order we want to do things in. We ought to use it.
I think it's good, it's a guideline, you know, on the ground, we always have something, we can always shuffle things around, but I think it's a good place to start. Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further comment. I think we're a little bit behind here. Keith, is this, can we go right to complete streets? It sounds like that's pretty quick. Do you want to give us?
Chris here from MAPC. At a meeting a couple of months ago, the board voted to accept assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council in drafting a so-called complete streets policy. The planning board had unanimously voted to recommend that we undertake that. And what we bring you tonight is, for first reading and for introduction, is the proposed policy document that's been drafted with MAPC's assistance by, with the help of staff, and has been unanimously approved by the planning board at their, at their most recent meeting. The way we adopt policies would be to receive it at one meeting and vote to schedule its adoption at a subsequent meeting. But Chris is here from MAPC, if you have any questions about the policy. The other thing that we had done at a previous meeting was to vote to support the legislation, it's called the Active Streets Program, which would create dedicated funding for communities that adopted complete streets policy. So that legislation is pending as well, but if you have any questions about the policy, Chris is here to...
Well, if we're going to hear it again, we're going to have this in another meeting on this, because this is just to receive it, and then we have to, we're going to have another discussion, maybe at that point if...
You'll have your...
If Chris was planning to come into that one anyway...
Well, you'll have your vote, Dan, and you'll have Chris tonight, so, yeah.
Only tonight? Yeah.
We could, I mean, I can be flexible on that. I think the intent was to try and answer any questions tonight, and so that the next meeting, the vote would occur. But however, I guess...
But the policy that's been developed here is similar to ones that have been adopted in Plymouth. Maynard is doing it as well.
Yes, I've been working with a number of communities. Maynard, they are the first one in our region to adopt a policy, which happened a couple weeks ago, similar to this in many ways. This policy is a little bit more closely sort of based upon Plymouth's policy, which was adopted, I think it was like a year ago. They're outside of our region. So, do you...
It's a complete, complete street policy.
Yeah.
It's very comprehensive.
Does it help me to sort of walk through the elements of it?
Actually, for the public, if you could briefly just explain what the whole thing encompasses, so that...
The elevator speech of what the complete streets policy is like.
Stand up or...
Sure, yeah, back yourself up.
I wasn't prepared for a presentation, but...
That's okay.
Okay. Hello, everybody. So the intent that we've been working with the town staff here, we have a, working with a number of people, including the bike ped committee, public safety, the fire DPW, a great task force of people to develop what's known as a complete streets policy. Complete streets are sort of, it's sort of this, I guess, philosophy, this design principles that essentially say that when you build roads, when you design roads, they should be done so in a way that is safe, accessible, and comfortable for users of all ages, so sort of focusing on children and elderly, and of all abilities. So thinking about people like disabled people that have more trouble crossing streets, for example. Also thinking about things such as people who are not just cars, but also bicyclists, pedestrians and whatnot. So what that sort of means in practice is that when possible, you try to have accommodations such as sidewalks for pedestrians, perhaps if there's right-of-way bike lanes for bicyclists, things like that. Have your walk signals timed so that they're appropriately lengthed, so people who maybe have a harder time crossing the street can cross the street easier, things like that. There's my elevator speech. Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
I think, oh, okay, yeah, sure, go ahead, sorry.
It's unfortunate that this was in our package right after reading the budget, so... But I look at this, and I wonder about what this costs us per foot. You know, we have a 10-year roadway improvement plan, does this ratchet up the cost per foot of roadway improvement?
The intent of the policy is to be done in an incremental fashion, so you're not looking at these wholesale changes. Some things really cost almost nothing. For example, if you were planning on, what we often recommend is when you're repaving your, I'm sorry, restriping your road, which happens on various roads throughout the year, maybe rather than striping the shoulder, which might be done now, you move it over four feet, and now you're striping a bike lane, and maybe there's a little bit of an incremental cost to put the bike person markings, for example. But the intent is not to sort of engage in extremely high types of projects.
It is meant to put it on the radar screen when we do our project planning, though, just, you know, and since we have a major commitment funds for roadway improvements, the board has a goal of adopting a sidewalk improvement plan as well, that when we're undertaking those major roadway projects, we can ask whether there are things we can do, is now the time to add a sidewalk, is there something else pedestrian-friendly we can, we can do, and it ratches it up to a higher policy visibility level, I think.
Okay. So while we, go ahead, and I guess we can receive this today, and then at our meeting on the 16th, maybe, Jimmy, if you have time to look at it and let us know how you think it'll impact you, and if police can look at it and let us know if there's any comments, I think that'd be helpful.
Did you have more?
Well, I was just going to add to that last point. There's also built into this exceptions that were written in, so if, for example, costs are disproportionate to the benefit, then that would, that would be a valid exception. And also... And also, I can also say that Jimmy and others were, actually did help with writing this actual policy, so they, they read it earlier than this.
Okay.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive the complete streets policy drafted with assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and recommended by the Planning Board and the Vice School and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and to schedule the adoption of said policy for the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting on December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion remains seconded to accept the, to receive the complete streets policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming back.
All right. That brings us to item six, which there are four items there. And seeing the crowd in the room, I'm going to take things out of order here. I believe there's some people here waiting, there's some people who have not been in this room for several years after being here on a regular basis, you know. This was something that I wanted to put on the agenda, because as we all know, Chief Kelly is going to be retiring. And we have received the succession plan recommended by Chief Kelly. And I think the board needs to do, has to have a discussion and make a decision on how we're going to proceed with that succession plan. I had intended on this being a meeting among the selectmen or discussion among the selectmen. It's not a scheduled public hearing, that doesn't mean we won't take public comment, but I thought this was something that we needed to discuss to see how we're going to proceed. And I'd like to kick it off by saying what my thoughts are and why we got to this point is if we are going to have any type of selection process or a, a process to interview and review potential candidates, we need to start that process now. What I would like to do, if we go through any type of process, is I'd like to have that done, completed by June first. I think that, Chief, your retirement is September fourth, sometime like that, and I've heard that there may be some, what we called in the military was terminal leave, where you may take your vacation toward the end. So, we need to be, we need to have any type of succession decided by, what my goal would be with June first. So, that being said, I think if you take this from the outside, I've been thinking about this a lot lately, and if you take this from the outside where you're hiring somebody as important as a police chief, you, you, the, the natural thought process to me would be like, well, then you really ought to have some sort of process to go through that. The difference here is in Littleton right now, we're not at that point. We're not looking at this with no candidates, and we're not looking at that with anybody in mind. There's been lots of talk, and, you know, people have been grabbing my ear, knowing that this is coming up, and saying that we have, you know, the best candidate in the House. So, if we, if somebody does decide that we have the best candidate in the House, do we go through some process that's going to end up at the same, the same result anyway? I think we saw that in the fire department process. We had several applications, and they came out, and it came out that it was two, two fire department employees that came out on top, and that was where the decision was made. So, you know, do we want to go through the process of when we feel confident in what the result is, or we already know what the result should be? So, I guess that's, that's really just my summary, is, you know, for an outsider, having no facts in the matter, a, you know, process seems to be the right way to go, but that's not where we're at. We do have, you know, excellent internal candidates, and we do have, I mean, I can throw it right out there, you know, the, there's, there's no reason to talk around it, I don't think. You know, Matt King is the recommendation in the succession plan, based on, you know, written by Chief Kelly. And with that, I'll open it up to the board. I think we want, I think my goal tonight is to talk about whether or not we need to have some sort of process, a search committee, or if we're going to go ahead and, and move on from, from here.
If I may, Mr. Chair. I, I think there's a little confusion, because the succession plan isn't really a plan that tells you how or who you're going to choose the next police chief. It's an operational plan that says the department will survive whatever happens to it. So, and the personnel board is discussing succession planning now. It's all about a department's being able to continue to operate well, given a wide range of circumstances that could happen, keep personnel leaving, whatever, whatever it may be. And I think that the plan that the chief has submitted more or less addresses that. It doesn't really address, okay, this is who I'd like you to pick as the next chief. And so, so I'd like to create that distinction, that a succession plan is really not, not, not a document for how we choose a police chief. It's a document for how the department chooses to operate and can, and will be ready to operate in any circumstance. One of those circumstances could be that we can't, and this happens a lot in towns, we, we can't come to having a process agreed upon before the chief actually decides he's done with us. And the succession plan at that point is what keeps things going, because that plan will say, okay, well, the chief's not there, this is how this department's going to operate. I think that's well addressed here. But I, so, I, I would like to have the distinction, it's two separate things. If we're discussing how we're going to select the next police chief, the succession plan, we may look at that, but the succession plan doesn't, isn't our guidance to how to do that necessarily.
Okay. Chief, do you want to address that real quick? I mean, do you want to make any clarifications?
I disagree completely.
Real quick. Okay. That's, that's my recollection, too. So, if I can-
When I advised the Board of Selectmen that I was going to retire, they requested of me and instructed me to present a succession plan, which would take the department through my final three years and beyond. And the instruction I received included beyond. It was not a plan if I fell down the stairs and broke my neck and wasn't able to come to work one day. That would be a sound management plan. That would not be a succession plan. Succession means to come after. And this plan was presented to the Board of Selectmen as a plan for what was to come after my departure. So, I disagree with you.
Okay.
All right. In your, in your particular case, you're correct, but that's what was-
Well, in the corporate world-
And that's what we're talking about.
Succession plans are the same thing.
And that's what we're talking about tonight. We're, we're talking about here, is we're not talking about all succession plans, we're talking about the recommendations. So, I think, I want to keep this focus on, you know, where we're at as far as, do we accept the succession plan or move to, toward that, or do we have any type of process? Want to keep it moving with the-
Sure. We've already accepted the succession plan.
We've received it.
We've received it.
Oh, yeah.
And accepted it. We voted on-
But you, you voted to receive it.
Receive it, but not to implement.
No, okay.
That's, that's where-
Well, you've taken any number of steps, exactly.
Yes, yes.
You've changed deputy chief, you've-
So, the question is, you know, are we going to look at the deputy chief to replace the chief? From my point of view, from where I'm sitting, that is the most logical, the most best transition, most transparent way for not only the department, but for the town also. And I think that any other type of search or process is really not necessary at this point. We have a candidate that this board has supported, a deputy chief that this board has supported for the past thirty-two years. We have recently sent him to high-level management school down in Kentucky, I believe.
Correct.
For a program that's, I'm told is better than the FBI program. And he's successfully completed that program. You know, you don't do that type of authorizations without knowing he's the guy for the job. So, to answer your question, Mr. Chair, I personally don't feel that there is any type of necessary process or anything for outside influence or outside posting for the position of chief of police in the town of Littleton. I do believe that there should be an interview process, and we should be able to take questions and comments from the public and have an interview with the deputy chief to make sure that we all are comfortable with the deputy taking over as police chief in the town of Littleton. And I think that would be a sensible step in the near future, whether it be in January, your, your, August, September second is your-
September second. Beginning of June, I will go on that terminal.
So, sometime, sometime there, prior to that, whether it be in February, April, or May, we need to make a decision to have an acting police chief while chief is out on his leave, and then move right into an appointment at September's two.
We see the support. Let's keep it rolling, yeah.
I'd like to add as well that in our very small town, it would be, in my opinion, demoralizing not to promote the most-
Come on.
That the most qualified applicant. My other thought around this is that we need to let the Littleton police know that we believe that their internal decisions are worthy. Now, I'm not sure that Deputy King wants the job. We would have to check it. But apart from that, I have no reservations as to him taking over for Chief John Kelly.
Echoing some of the same things that was said, I think it's important to realize that you're in this very special situation right now in town. It doesn't happen that often that you have someone who's served the town for thirty-two years. And in a small town like Littleton, there's a special character, characteristic of people who have an understanding of what actually goes on in the town this side. It's not something you can just bring in from the outside to have it done. We've had someone who started as a patrolman, a detective, sergeant, a lieutenant, with different other roles that he, he has done all along, straight through. And it just seems to make sense that, that the transition is there. And like I said, and it's not something that's out of the ordinary. It's not something that's just happening in Littleton. It happens in other towns. There's probably, a list I saw today probably had thirteen or fourteen different towns that took their deputy chief and, and did it without any long still selection process. And I think my point is, once again, is that this is a special situation, it doesn't happen that often, and it just seems to make sense. It makes sense for the police department, too. It allows officers to see that I can go through this department, and I worked hard all the way through, that it's possible to move from one spot to another spot to another spot, without getting to the very last second and saying, no, we're going to have this big selection process now. You went thirty-two years, you've done a fantastic job, we've supported you through every single step, but now, we're going to stop and say, we're going to bring other, other people in. I just think it's, it's a, in this case, that's, it's a wrong step.
What am I going to do, call the cops? Seriously, so-
That's funny. Good for you.
So, um, so my goal tonight was to kick off a discussion without trying to tip my hand, because I really wanted to hear what other people think. But, you know, working with the deputy over the last several years and, and seeing what he does and hearing from so many people, I, you know, I think I support everything the board's done. There's people here who have worked with him longer, and, you know, I would, I would support the appointment process, you know, through an interview, kind of a last-minute checks and balance, and then move forward. So, I don't know how we want to do this now. Do we want to proceed with a vote to have, or do we want to have a, an interview? Do we want to have a-
I think the timeframe is going to start from the June date and work our way back there. If a February, maybe a February, March timeframe for an interview, and then you have a June acting vote.
Yeah.
Do you have an opinion about that timeframe?
I have many opinions. I'm not shy of sharing. Mr. Chair, if I could-
Sure.
To go along with what Mr. Carr said, if in fact the board does follow the succession plan and promote Deputy Chief Matthew King, there are a number of steps that need to take place after that. Deputy chief, sergeant, and the hiring of a patrolman, either one of our reserves or someone else. And I would like to have that in place by July one for the new fiscal year. Everything would be done within the new, within our budget. But I would like the department to be whole, cohesive, and prepared to move forward at that time.
I'd, I'd move it back a couple of months if possible. May, something like that, if, if possible.
You're going to give me a couple extra months, I think?
No, but we can get that, we can get everything spelled out. I don't think it has to, it does have to be happened, but I think we need-
It's not terminal, it's not long.
So, so while we, while we schedule an interview with Matt for, let's go second meeting in January, that first one's kind of, kind of put up. And do you want, do we turn that into a public hearing?
A little bit of a push on that. January is, well, February, still. I mean, we're going to do a, we're going to do an interview, and the appointment of our acting is done for June. I think more important is to have the chief and deputy come before us and get those vacancy reviews done, get those in place, as you just said, chief. And then, once those are completed, now I think we can have the time to do the interview.
Well, I guess my urgency is, I think we want, I, I need, I think this board needs to take an action to decide whether or not, you know, to make, formalize the decision not to have a, a procedure. So, whether we do that tonight, or we-
Why don't we do this tonight?
Right, because once you vote to promote from within, then you're in essence saying there will be a vacancy at the end-
Correct.
Which will mean that you trigger the rest of the plan, which is filling, you know, deputy, filling sergeants, filling patrolmen.
So, at this point, is the motion to accept the succession plan? It's been received?
I think it, well-
Is that the next step?
I think we need to be more specific. I, I think you want to vote your, vote your intent to fill the, the position of chief from within the department and schedule an interview with the deputy chief for, name the date. Okay, so.
As long as it's formalized, I'm not that worried about the schedule, you know. As long, you know-
Make a motion to fill the deputy, the police chief of Littleton within the department, from within the department, and schedule a interview for the deputy chief in February.
Do we have a meeting?
Yeah, tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Really? Ten.
I'd pick the tenth.
Ten.
Earlier. Yeah, we're going to need the time with-
Tenth.
Are we tenth?
Tenth.
Okay. Available that night.
Lean Claris calendar. Okay, we have a motion before us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to promote the deputy chief from within to the police chief pending an interview. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes.
Congratulations. I am honored. I'm glad you got the memo about the purple shirt.
See, things like this don't happen in Providence Town.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Where the, where the police chief is suspended now for two months, about, with Bay. With Bay.
I stayed on.
Yeah, well, that's good, that's good. Haven't been there in a while. Just, just come back from Nantucket.
If you want to take a ride down, I'm trying to have a Wednesday. I mean, I'd like to have-
Oh, that's funny. Thank you, thanks.
Would you have a seat? Thank you. It'll be a wonderful session. All of them. Yeah. Yeah. And you know, it's funny, first day, I think it gets like a lot, and they call me two days later, and they say, "I'm chief of the-" I know. I just sweat. So, I'm there. Yeah. I know what he does. I've got something else in the bag. Always. And thanks for helping me.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, but you get, yeah, 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 yeah.
Very good, okay, thank you. I knew they weren't all here for the complete streets policy. Yeah, that's right, yeah, let's talk about it. Actually, the vote to fill the vacancy.
Apparently we're recessed.
Well, I guess...
Is it not?
It is.
All right, remember Joe was retired.
All right, good night, gentlemen.
All right, as soon as Joe gets back, we'll come into, back into session here.
Wow, that whole full house makes you kind of nervous, doesn't it?
It can, yeah.
No, I'm trying out for a play, I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it unless anyone comes.
I've gotten used to it, I'm fine when they're not, like, bearing knives against me, but if they're all here to hate me, then I'm...
I know that the fire chief wants to do this to Conservation Commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
That's fine, let's...
Do you want to start tackling the other?
Yeah, let's go to 6A if there's no disagreement about going there. So, we talked about doing this for a couple of years, and now we're looking at our goals, I mean, at our regulations, and I thought this was going to be much smaller, so I think that this may take over a couple of nights, because I've been involved in things like this a few times, and they don't go quickly. But I think if there's no... If there's no, what am I looking for, there's no...
Jim distributed hard copy.
If we're all in favor, let's just start from the beginning. No disagreements, tell me, yeah, if there's no objection, there's no objection, we just start from the beginning. All right. So...
It's a lot of chefs in this kitchen.
There are a lot of chefs, and mine, after seeing everybody else, I didn't comment on so many. I think one thing that we should do, the first thing we should do is, there seems to be a lot of discussion over the ethics, I think we might want to not tackle that one if we get to it tonight, we put that off to a separate meeting for itself. But from what I'm seeing here in order, I think there were some comments on the first couple here, and Alex has some comments on the first couple, and Jenna has some comments on the couple.
Well, I first, when we said we were going to do this, I, like a fool, started from the beginning of the book and went all the way through. So I found a couple of things in here that we could simply refer off because they aren't really part of the agenda.
From the start, meaning the Part 1 regulations, or the start from the code?
The code.
Oh. All right, because what we wanted was the Part 1.
No extra credit for doing unnecessary work.
Well, oftentimes these things, you know, one affects another, so I sort of went through it in the beginning, and I happened, you know, I was enjoying the reading so much that I found a few things that maybe we could defer off to look at. You know, I ran across this one, for instance, and this is kind of funny, where it talks about the procedure for a car passing another car.
Oh, yeah.
Or perhaps we should absolutely achieve if that's still, you know, if we want to update that, so, those kinds of things.
Well, we'll just start at...
Where's the...
Part 1.
Part 1 regulations, chapter 1, alcohol beverages, okay? So, I don't have everybody here, but if you have your comments...
We didn't do that, we were assigning something different, so we should talk about what we assigned.
Oh, just... Policies, not regulations.
Policies.
Art 2. Page 43.
So if we just take that page by page and go through any...
Yeah, if you have comments as we go through this.
We'll be able to rip it right out.
Yeah. I thought we were doing regulations. Okay, all right, so administration policies of the board. Anybody, anybody?
This is sort of hard, you know, everybody's got different...
Only one of us used the word document and edited it and highlighted it and did strikeouts.
No, I know.
I thought we were all going to do it.
No, I just don't go. I don't roll that way.
I almost did this.
I don't know, I just, I made a comment on vacancies on the board, I see, you know, I said we shall have a, I said we're supposed to have a special town election. I thought somewhere we had another one that said provided that there's less than, or there's greater than six months remaining on the term, and we're going to have a special election in April if somebody resigns.
I had something on the vacancies, if you're jumping that far ahead.
Yeah, vacancy of the board, well, we're starting on 43, and that's page 44.
We're not jumping too far.
The other thing in the first part of the vacancies is that if there was, if we had a vacated seat and there was only six months to go, I would hate to think that we hold a special election for six months, go through the cost of that when there's only six months to go. But something that Jenna had put down, may or shall, I personally would rather have it be May, so the Board of Selectmen has a, where they can change their mind at times.
Well, May, it is May in there right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She put the suggestion, I'm just commenting on that.
Yeah, but I think I have the same thing, so I mean, I think there should be something in there that says, you know, it gives some sort of guideline, you know?
Or maybe it should say, shall call a special election if the term of vacancy is over a year?
Well, what does Massachusetts general law say? That's what we're referring to.
It doesn't specify.
Doesn't specify, okay.
I would go along with shall if it's over a year, that's...
As practical matter is, the Board of Selectmen gets to call the election, although the voters get to tell you if they disagree with your decision. And that's what happens politically, if, I've seen Boards of Selectmen vote not to hold a special election, and then you have room for people the next week who may or may not agree with you, so, but that's the check and balance.
That's the check and balance, exactly. So, you know, not to go backwards, but why don't we take that first, that first paragraph that there are changes, because it says, beginning in the fiscal year when the annual appointments are made, 1st of July, first meeting in July.
He's working off of my copy.
Yeah, I'm working off of Jenna's copy.
I just figured out, because that's probably the best way to do this.
Well, because no one else had, because it preserved, right, it preserves the original text. And there is no other comment from anybody else on these sections but the exception of Jenna, so...
Which one are you on?
First paragraph.
Page 44 at the top, in yellow.
So, beginning of the fiscal year when the annual appointments are made, or the change is first meeting in July. Six and one half dozen the other to meet?
Yeah.
I have no issue.
But if we set the first meeting of July, it's set, that's on the agenda, and it doesn't get put off and put off and put off.
Well, the beginning of the fiscal year...
Because here we are, December 2nd, talking about policies and procedures, and it says, the annual review of policies and procedures should occur, and it said, beginning of fiscal year, and we're here on the 2nd of December.
And we've never done it before.
Well, it's not an unreasonable thing to do, the many boards, I know ours never has, many boards, the new board that gets elected, one of the first mechanical things you do is to vote to adopt the policies that you're, that the previous board put into place.
And you know, that's a great, and that's a great point, because there's a lot of things in here that I didn't know until we started doing this process.
Okay, then the first meeting in December, that's fine with me, too. It doesn't matter, but I think we should pick a date.
The May, May is our, after the elections are in May, so, well, our first meeting after the elections.
We need to adopt.
Didn't you just make the point, Keith, that we would be adopting last year's board's policies?
Well, the point is that the board that's, that would have just been seated following the election, that in some communities, there is the practice of the new board adopting the policies of the old, you know, with or without amendment, so that you've got some document that is, that you're claiming to own.
Supportive, yeah, yeah.
Because otherwise, you know...
But when do they do that, when?
Well, you do it...
The election?
Yeah, you do it within a month or two, I think.
Okay, so...
First meeting in July.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so elections in May.
Actually, not one I'm going to use anyway.
July is awful, vacation month.
You miss out on votes, though. You made the point.
How many of us do we, how often do we really miss them?
Almost never.
And we have, we're really good.
Because we rescheduled them on a night football game.
Oh, yeah.
July's fine, we'll talk about, that's next, that's coming up.
I know, you're excited about this.
The only comment I would have to that is the first order of business, usual, on the new board is goals. And we start talking about that right off, like, you know, if there's new people on the board, they have, there are things that they like to throw into the goals and stuff like that. I'm not sure policies is the right first discussion.
Absolutely is, that's what we're governed by.
Plus, that's a month, anyway.
This is our operating, this is our, this is how we're governed, and the policies set our, how we operate. So you would do that first and then get into your objectives.
But the first meeting in July, you've already had two meetings to start kind of getting, and you have time to review, you're not going to review these things before you get elected, so you need to, you need to be...
I agree, all I'm saying is...
Because you've got two months.
Our elections are in May, the first meeting thereafter the elections, we should review, that board should review the policies. As a new member coming on, I want to know that, okay, this is how I organize the board, okay, this is, if I leave in six months, what's going to happen? So, it'd be the first meeting thereafter...
So it'd be the first meeting in June?
First meeting...
Or it'd be the second meeting in May?
Correct.
Because the first meeting in May would be the... We usually don't have a second meeting because we run up against Memorial Day.
So it's going to be June.
Yeah.
Well, do it the same way as for the organization of the board, was it, at the first regular board meeting following the annual town election?
So you get elected on Saturday, and then by Monday, you have to have read all of this?
No, 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 because the first regular meeting is on until a month later.
Absolutely not, I was elected on the 11th, and I sat at this table at the 13th.
That's always...
Of May.
Two days later. Yeah, Mother's Day was one day where it was...
Right, so I thought we just said in June, we'd do the review in June.
That's...
Fine, fine, first meeting in June, then.
First regular meeting in June.
That way, you're not reading it the very first day yet.
Yeah, all right, okay. Second item. All right, election qualification.
Swear or affirm, yeah.
Before assuming official duties, each member will, well, it says town...
I'm sorry, I didn't cross out B, sorry.
Well, swear, well sworn.
No, will swear or affirm faithful performance of his or her official responsibilities with the town clerk.
Does that affect, does that affect by MGL?
No. You can swear or affirm jury duty and any other, and I know that you can affirm with Diane.
Okay. All right.
So, are we going to have, shall call a special town election if the unexpired term exceeds one year?
Yes.
And then, other than that, it's up to the selectmen, how do we say that?
I thought May, yeah, shall, because you're having the year, correct.
Yeah.
And are we going to add the thing, if it's less than six months, we don't call it?
What do we do between six and a year?
It's up to the discretion of the board, any other, any other time is...
Well, once again, I...
So then you can say less than one year is left to the board's discretion, as to whether to call a special town?
All other vacancies are at the board's discretion.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Jenny, get this.
How often does it happen?
So essentially, you can see in the Board of Selectmen...
I don't think it's ever happened here in the midterm.
It's happened in town.
Not recently, I mean...
It happened in the 80s.
You know, back when hair was starting here.
You know where I was?
High school?
Let's keep going.
All right, so now, so, organization of the board, I think Joe, Jim had this one, and I, organization of the board, I said if...
That should be capital S.
Oh, all right, well, get that, all right. So, if there's no immediate past chairman, then the immediate vice vice chairman of the board will serve as chairman pro tem. In the case of, in case where there is no vice chair, the clerk shall serve as the chair pro tem.
Right, and all I'm saying is, we, the board elects a hierarchy of this board, it should be followed through the policies, that's all.
Yeah. All right, I'm, I'm going to keep rolling, if there's thoughts or...
I have, I have no qualms with doing it in the way suggested by Jim with respect to, you know, this last time around, Greg was not here, so...
Correct. Alex.
Alex, no, you were vice chair?
No, he was, no, because it was this convoluted thing.
Joe was vice chair.
Right, but it was this...
So Joe should have, in the new policy...
That's right.
Taken the seat, rather than the senior non-chair holder previous.
Yeah, right, right. All right.
And we were here splitting on the term current service because Joe had more years on the Board of Selectmen that they were...
And that comes up every year, let's just get clear and cut.
Yep.
All right, so the next comment I have is, is this supposed to be number seven? This chairman will have the same rights as other members to discuss questions in there, is that should be number seven?
No, because it's what you will do, one through six.
We'll have the same, all right, all right, all right. In matters that require discussion, chairman will, to the extent that is practical, request the input of members of the board prior to sharing his opinion on said matter.
Is it all hers?
Is it her, yeah.
I'm sorry, absolutely, his slash her, I wasn't really thinking...
I, you know...
Sorry, you're stuck with that.
My thoughts on this is, it just, it doesn't lock us in, I mean, we don't follow any type of Roberts rules or any parliamentary procedure for a reason, because where does the person's input start before, between introducing to providing opinion, and I just think as soon as the chair opens her mouth, that someone's going to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, you can't say that until everyone else speaks.
It doesn't say that, it says, to the extent that is practicable. My suspicion is that there are times where you could say, as the chair sitting now, hmm, what do we think, board, and then you could weigh in at the end.
But what, but this gives some sort of higher authority to the, this appears to give some higher authority to the chairman where it doesn't, I mean, why, why can't the chair go first?
Why can't the chair go first? Because I think as the chairperson, you're facilitating the discussion, and as facilitator, you should open up the discussion among the board members before using your chairmanship, not you personally, but any chair, to weigh in on said matter.
But somebody's got to go first. I just don't, I just don't like walking into one person.
And it shouldn't be the chair.
Why?
I think that's what she's saying. I think it, I think it makes for a better consensus building process when the chair involves the rest of the board first.
But why, because the chairs are members, just like everybody else.
And states their opinion last, I think it's a...
I think it adds on, it's the personality of the chair.
Yeah, you know, and you're talking consensus building, that's, that's like you're saying the chair feels that they're right, and they're going to try and get everyone to think their way, it's not consensus building, it's kicking off a discussion.
Imagine if you'd had this discussion before 6D tonight, or 6C, so...
Well, I just didn't know, because I didn't give an opinion, I only introduced. But, under this policy, if I started to lean one way or the other, could someone have said, hey, nope, 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 stop?
Zip it.
All right, so that's why I don't want to be, I don't want the chair to be locked into it. And I just think that, but what Alex says, it seems to be giving like, okay, the chair has, the chair has some additional authority or knowledge...
Well, you do, look at list 1 through 6 here, you've got all these special duties that you have, so you do have higher responsibilities than the rest of us, and it would be nice if you would share the responsibility of facilitation and discussion before sharing your opinion, not you, but any chair.
But you're saying you, but, you know, it does happen, I just don't think locking in a parliament, locking into that would be, is necessary.
It's not locked in, it would say, the chairman shall keep his mouth shut until everyone else has spoken, it doesn't say that.
When practical, right. But so now we can have this argument, while it is practical for me to share my opinion now.
I'll use a specific example, and, you know, and I voice my concerns with you about this, but when you, when you sit there and you say, somebody comes in and they want to do an interview or something like that, and you say, well, I don't want a second guest to bother, when the chair speaks like that, the chair, what the public sees is the chair speaking for the board. When the chair sort of sits back a little bit and says, all right, now we... When the chair sort of sits back a little bit and says, all right, now we have to have a discussion about this, you know, these are, these are the variables we have in front of us. Okay, board members, what would you like to do? Now, since I've been on in 2006, the vast majority of chairs do it that way. They, they, they take a, they take an introductory role, and then they, they sort of sit back and let the board participate in the deliberations.
I don't remember having the discussion with you, but the, I don't know, if you want to argue my example there, I don't think that's where we want to go with that. But I mean, it was an introductory thought process, and, you know, again, you're putting more weight on the chair than, they're, you're basically saying, Alex, you just basically said that the chair has more authority than other people, has more say than any other member, and it's just, it's just not that way.
Why don't we change it to, in the matters that require discussion, the chairman may, to the extent of that is practical, requesting input of the members.
Because he has more authority. He gets to decide. All right, on this issue, I want to speak first.
Well, wait, someone's gotta go first.
Well, I know, but.
Someone's gotta go first, so there's, so then, so then, okay, Alex, whatever we have, stop for a minute.
There's like chairs that have done it the other way.
Stop for a minute, stop for a minute. But, so when I say, most of the time when we have some sort of discussion, I kick it to you first. So does that give you more authority? Because you always get first. So now let's add on here, let's see. The board, the chair shall rotate on a continuous basis who gets to speak first, so that no one will have any undue influence over the rest of the board on a regular basis.
That is a great idea. I like that. We have to keep it tabulation here.
I kick it to you every time and go this way. Does that need to change?
We're usually at the tail end of the discussion. We bring in the logic at the end.
And we all have been chairs in a different style, and my style was to say, okay, board members.
So why is your style right, and why are you trying to implement that on everybody?
Hold on a second. It was my suggestion, because I thought it would better facilitate, and it would be perceived by the public as you, not you, the chair, the chair facilitating an openness. So that was my intent in writing this and highlighting it in yellow and italicizing it.
Although he's coming up, he's making, he's supporting it, and that's all he's saying, the same point. But, so you, you were a past chair, and you did it your way. When you get to be chair, you get to do it your way.
And I, I agree with what's being said here, but I'll, I'll agree on what you just said. I think it's up to the individual selectmen when they become chair, how they're gonna handle it. Someone has to speak first, and if you decide that you're gonna speak first, I think that's the way it goes. The way that I do it, I do it, and Alex does. We both did it two years in a row. That's, but that's how, that's how we, we, we do it. But that's not, this is the one thing I don't think we need to put in there. I think it's, it's really up to everyone.
That's fine, but you will be judged harshly.
That's fine, but also, I just want to say, part of what I'm doing is, I'm also trying to introduce things more, because I feel that there's been some past chairs where they say, item six B, Keith, and yes, I do kick a lot of stuff off like that, but I'm also trying to say, trying to make the board appear to take an active role in me more in this. And I'm trying to introduce things more often, and maybe that's perception, but.
But we've all seen, and I'm not saying this for it, but we've all seen boards and chairs where the chair takes absolute authority, and that's, and I think we all agree, that's not what we want.
Well, that's when the board, that's when the other board members should speak up. They say, hey, how about let me talk? Hey.
There you go.
You know, if you're gonna sit there and let me speak and be the only voice, say, that's your own fault.
Moving on. I don't think I'm guilty of that.
All right, so another comment that I made was, I like the, to ensure better than C, but is this really done?
Where are you at?
The bottom page forty-five.
Yeah, you know.
Do you ensure that the warrants are signed weekly? Is that done?
You do them electronically, do them electronically.
Okay, so do we really need to have commentary here that doesn't, isn't supported by?
Don't be taking away my bow was.
How about the, the primary function is to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? I'm fine with that. That's what you do. And then you introduce the minutes.
It's a ceremonial.
Right.
Function to ensure.
Do we need a clerk?
Well, you have to have a clerk by.
Well, it says that it's.
By MGL.
By statute, yeah, okay.
Yeah, by statute, you have to.
Because of certain documents only he can sign.
I think we should say, is to lead the pledge.
Well, yeah, well, there's gonna be.
Is it thirty?
No, it's right. There are, well, let's see what's on the other, where the clerk signs certain documents, and the other board members don't.
Certain documents are signed by.
No, there, there are documents, I believe there are the.
Particular doc, but it's not the warrants, right, that are signed, and they're not legal.
We all sign those warrants here now, we sign them electronically.
So the primary function of the clerk will be administrative duties and to chair the meeting in the event that the vice chair and the chair are absent.
There you go.
Something like that.
In some boards, the.
To lead the pledge.
And to lead the pledge.
You really want to put that.
I really do.
The clerk reads the public notice. I don't mind with.
Yeah, that's fine, too, I just.
When you open up a public hearing, you read that. In some places, the clerk, that's their job.
And that, that's fine, and that's, I've only done it because that's the way it's always been done, and no one ever told me that I can't read them.
And that's because we never reviewed the policies prior to our.
Okay, so the functions of the clerk is to lead the pledge. I'm not kidding with that.
I thought it had to open, I thought the chair had to open.
Okay, to lead the pledge of allegiance, to read public hearing notices. There, you've taken off your plate.
It's not my plate, it's only my plate this year.
Off the chairman's plate.
Chair, now, why are we doing this? Do we want to change to chair instead of chairman?
I do. Let's change it to chair.
Everywhere.
Every chair, everywhere. Yeah, let's change it to chair. Can we do that, Chair? Easy. Because I'd like to.
No, I'm, I was saying.
Yeah. Chair, chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Chairman, instead of chairman?
Traditionally been a chairman.
I like chairman.
Oh, stop it.
I like chairman.
Janet liked it.
Yeah, she did. She did.
Chairman of the Board of what?
Yeah, chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Isn't that a little redundant?
Yeah.
It's a little redundant. It's repetitively redundant.
Moving on. So, your pledge of allegiance, the, what else would you say?
To read the public hearing notices and.
Other administrative duties.
Other necessary admin.
Chairing, in the, chairing the meeting in the absence of the chair and the vice chair.
We should be so lucky to help you step up as chair.
You did a great job.
You weren't here, you were absent.
I did for a year.
Oh.
A year, back when you were on library commission, not even showing up.
Trustee, library trustee. Okay, turning the page to forty-six.
That's where I'm going next.
Okay, gentlemen, love this one, right? The board will not meet on the Monday evening in the fall when the New England Patriots are scheduled to play their Monday night football game.
I would take out the fall because technically, winter starts December twenty-first.
You know, let's, 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 let's have a little discussion here. You know, Mondays are terrible. You know, coming off a workday for me, on Mondays are usually not good, and I don't know why, maybe it's the business I'm in. Would, would the board be willing to change to a Tuesday day? I mean, you get that weekend, the Monday over, and then you can start your week on a Tuesday. I mean, I'm telling you.
We should all start our week on Tuesday.
I'm so entrenched.
For the town, yes.
I'm so entrenched in being in Mondays.
What other, what other meetings happen on Tuesday nights that we might?
I know Board of Health.
And let's talk about.
Tuesday nights are the busy nights.
Let's, let's talk about the notification process and the forty-eight hours with a Tuesday, a Tuesday.
Pushes it out to Friday.
Pushes it out to Friday, gives us a little more leeway.
There's no more leeway.
You got the same amount of days.
Forty-eight hours.
You got the same amount of days.
Yeah, I know. That's a terrible argument.
I'm trying.
It's always been Mondays, Mondays.
Yeah, and I think we know, I think God a tradition, we, I mean, we're not locked into, I say, regular board meetings are generally held on Monday evenings, as scheduled by the board of, by the board.
Been that way for a long, long time. People will be rolling over that grave if we change that.
You have Tom Rocker, Walter Barkus.
They're, they're not in there, Greg, definitely.
But they'll be back in here. They'll be back in here. So anyway, all right, so are we scratching the part about Monday night football?
No, I think we should include it.
No, leave it out.
Leave it out.
Oh, so it's shameful if it's in the policy, but it's okay to vote it in.
It's unwritten.
No, no, we could, we could change a meeting date anytime we want.
It's unwritten.
Whether it be your birthday or a Monday night football game for the Patriots, we could change that meeting.
Fine, it's not my birthday this year.
Town election, or is that?
What happens at the end with five people who don't watch football?
If it's gonna be our practice, it has to be in there. But it shouldn't be our practice. We meet on Monday night, and it doesn't matter what the Patriots, or the Celtics, or the Red Sox, or anybody else.
You are absolutely correct, but if a majority of the board wants to meet on Tuesday, we make that vote, and it's done.
Yeah, it's an unwritten tradition. I like that. I like unwritten traditions.
We set the property tax rate on a Tuesday. That's right.
Because of Monday night football.
It's all right, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, but we're not gonna be working.
You know, Board of Health, they change every meeting because of Monday night football, what's it because of the Patriots? All right, working sessions, we're changing meetings to sessions? Fine with me. Makes it, let's see.
But is this done, the summary of transactions of any informal session will be made a part of the minutes of the following regular meeting?
I don't see how that squares with the open meeting law.
What does, what?
Working sessions.
Instead of working meetings? Oh.
Well, if you have a working group, they have to be posted, like, like, well, like our.
What says that? It'll be posted in accordance with the open meeting law.
Yeah, but why, yeah, why would you change?
About their meetings.
Oh, you're saying it has to stay at meetings?
By meeting.
That's fine, that's fine. I just thought that they spelled like sessions and not meetings. So fine. It's just syntactical.
But the question is.
The question is, do we do this? I don't remember with the extensive recreational use bylaw group that Ted and I sat on, that we were coming to the next.
Well, but that wasn't the Board of Selectmen. This, this refers to the Board of Selectmen as.
Like a sub-working group of three?
What would be an example of that?
Well, let's see.
I can't remember.
We're having a regular meeting right now, a regular board meeting. If you had a, a single item agenda on some topic, and you weren't taking any votes, that's the closest I can come to.
Well, we haven't done it. I don't remember doing this recently.
And that's not what we did before town meeting. We took a vote.
Sure.
But that was a meeting.
So that was a meeting. Do we even have working sessions? Because if we don't, we should just.
Working meetings?
Well, as a practical matter, we tend to go to other people's meetings to have those. Like, we, we'll go to a planning board meeting to talk with them about.
But it's a posted meeting, so.
Something, but it's still a meeting, yeah.
Do we need this? Do we, if we don't do it?
I'm not sure what practice it would have meant to cover.
Okay.
All right, can we ex-nay working session meetings totally?
Completely off.
Yeah, yeah. All right, got it, Jen? All right, meeting procedures. A quorum consists of three boards as a practical courtesy action. Yeah, this is some, well, define critical, or controversial.
Where are we?
A quorum will consist of three board members of the board. As a practical courtesy, action on critical or controversial matters, the adoption of policy appointments will be taken whenever practicable with a full board in attendance. Action and decisions will be by motion, second, all right.
I actually think that could be a new paragraph. The actions and decisions will be by motion.
Yeah, I agree. That's not, it's sort of a different thing than.
Yeah, it's like a general policy.
That paragraph.
I mean, it's in there, but I just don't know, how do you, you know, it's always, you just can start splitting hairs. Critical or controversial, what is it, define that. So, we're not really changing anything, so.
Well, it says, well, you could have, you could take out action on critical or controversial matters. You could just have the adoption of policy or appointments will be taken. You know, the practical courtesy will be taken with respect to policy and appointments. And we've got policy happening, though, at almost every meeting where we're voting on policy.
So is this whole, is this whole policy practicable?
My sense is that we should take out that second sentence, the practical courtesy. All right, a quorum will exist, will consist of three members of the board, and then actions and decisions will be by motion, second, and opportunity for discussion on the motion and thereafter vote.
Sure.
Can we just take out that whole second sentence there, Jen?
But the only thing is, it's, it's trying to point out that if it, if we know something is a big deal, is a big deal, then we are gonna try to have a full board. Doesn't mean we, it'll end up that way, but we're gonna make the attempt to.
But taking this out doesn't prevent it.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't prevent you from trying to do it.
And.
I just don't want to be locked in, you know, then can somebody stall something? If somebody's coming up and they're against it, can they not show up at meetings and have it not come to the table?
We've done it to the point where I, I've been, I've asked the board, hey, listen, can we table this? You know, I'm not gonna make the next meeting.
We tabled municipal, special municipal warrants, yeah.
So we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
I think.
For all these years, as, as, I think where the hangup is defining what would be where the, where the board would want a full board to deliberate it. But it's been done this way for a long time. You get to certain matters, and you go, wow, we, we really should have a full board for this.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's true. There are some things that you really want a full board discussion of.
Right.
Particularly if, if it could go in any direction.
Sure.
That discussion.
But that's, it's already sort of open and transparent already. I don't know if we need to have this amorphous, critical or controversial matters thrown in there. I mean, people speak up when they say, oh, you're scheduling that for the next meeting, I'm not gonna be here. Let's put it off to the meeting after that. And our attendance is good.
Look at it from the terms of a new member of the board. A new member comes on.
They better show up every meeting.
Well, no, I'm not saying that. But they, they would understand by reading this policy, oh, when we get into something that's really critical, we want a full board. You know, we need to say that someplace. I really think, I think we do need to say that.
All right, the horse is dead.
I mean, there's five of us for a reason.
So that second sentence, we deleted in the morning?
I, that's how I feel about it. I mean, let's, I'll be quite honest. I did not read meeting procedures until about three o'clock in the morning on Thanksgiving, when I did my homework, but I knew that this was the way that the board operated, having watched how the board operates. Having seen people assert, it's important for me to be there, and I won't be.
I don't, yeah.
I think we can take that second sentence.
I just don't, like, I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't, I don't like being locked into stuff.
Okay.
And then somebody can filibuster by not showing up.
So the, the, the last paragraph, you know, we're separating that into a separate, or the last sentence in that paragraph, are we separating that into its own paragraph?
No, I think we, I think we can have, a quorum will consist of three members of the board, ex-nay the next sentence, continue. Actions and decisions will be by motion, second, an opportunity for discussion on the motion, and thereafter vote. Split votes will be identified by name. I'm of the opinion that that is exhaustive, and.
Wait, split votes will be identified? What is that?
That means if you vote no.
I don't agree. I don't, I don't want that.
And the rest of us vote yes. I'm sure Jen will identify after tonight's minutes that I voted no, when the rest of you said yes.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be Brownson, no.
Which is generally done.
Yeah.
Let's see, from the last meeting. Was last meeting, was last meeting snow? Was last meeting snow?
Snow removal?
Yeah, was last meeting snow?
Yeah.
All right, so as a practical courtesy, action on critical or controversial matters, the adoption of policy appointments will be taken, whatever practical.
Where are you? Okay. All right, come on, cranking through quarter to ten. Here we go.
All right, so the next is, is, all items for the agenda must be submitted to the administrator by four o'clock on, I want to change it to Tuesday. I mean, Thursday, we gotta post Thursday at five o'clock, right? You want, don't you want to have things a week, a couple days earlier?
When do you post?
It was something.
Thursday's, Thursday at five o'clock.
I'm not sure what the practice was when that language was written, but now, I mean, we're, we're cranking out agenda items until Friday afternoon, so.
My boss appreciates that.
We're not, we're not, we're not getting them done by four o'clock on Thursday, if that's what this policy.
No, this policy is like, if, if another town board has something, or one of us has something, let's get it in there by four o'clock. I mean, this board, obviously, people have called up and said, hey, can I get this on there? And it's like, yeah, it's no, no big deal, but.
This is simply saying that if we're gonna put something, we want something on the agenda, we have to get it to the town administrator by this time. Doesn't necessarily mean it's posted.
Right, but four o'clock on Tuesday is what I would recommend. Just give a couple of.
But practically, we're working at noon on Friday?
Yeah.
So.
No, not noon on.
Because it, it mentions town administrator in there, too, and I'll tell you, we're working on the packets until, you know, Friday, Friday afternoon, until they get out. But to, to the point of getting matters on the agenda, if, 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 if there could certainly be a deadline, it would seem reasonable to have a deadline to get it to the chairman for when things would be done on the agenda. And we, I mean, we have a draft agenda usually by Tuesday.[1728.15] And we, I mean, we have a draft agenda usually by Tuesday.
Tuesdays, yeah.
Okay.
For, for posting on Thursday.
Well, can we have all items for the agenda must be submitted to the chair by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday proceeding?
Well, I think all requests.
All requests for insertion?
All requests...
To the town administrator, because he, because Keith puts the agenda together and then forces it to go on.
It would certainly be reasonable to set a deadline for when the requests come in.
All right.
To say 4:00 on Tuesday for the following Monday would be reasonable.
Okay, so all requests for the...
All requests.
All items, all items requested for the agenda...
And then it's at the call of the chair whether those, you know, what requests will, we have a draft agenda, but then we'll finalize what matters get posted and what matters get rescheduled to a later time.
Or get booted to the sidewalk.
But I just, what happens if something comes up on Wednesday that's really important and has to be heard? You can still put it on.
We do all, I mean, unfortunately, you do, it happens all the time and you're not gonna stop, and this isn't gonna stop it.
It's not?
No, but it's gonna hopefully get most, more stuff in.
Because who's reading this?
Who's reading what?
This.
No.
These marching orders.
It could be so, I don't know, if someone comes in and with, it's something that's gonna take a lot of organization and putting it together. We're gonna need a, you know, to get prepared for it, then you, and you come walking in with a Wednesday.
The Thursday deadline in this language was written when the law on posting allowed the agenda to get posted on Friday.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, so if you move it, move it back one day, maybe that's it. Because we must post on, we must post on Thursday. So, if you want to, so it's, it's unreasonable to get a request in after Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, so 4:00 p.m. on the Wednesday proceeding?
Yep.
All requests are in.
If I see, if Keith's okay with that, I was trying to buy another day, but...
Yeah, that, that would work.
All items requested for the agenda must be submitted to the town administrator by four...
Usually go through three or four iterations of the agenda anyway.
Well, that's, and then I get a hold of it.
But, but Keith, at the same time, there are folks who request, I want to be on the agenda. Let's say, Parker back tonight. We want to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's requested by 4:00 on Wednesday.
Well, their request came in a month ago.
Let's just say for the sake of argument, they requested at 4:00 on Wednesday. We had time in the schedule.
Yeah.
But they didn't have their paperwork done until 9:00 a.m. on Friday. You'd still accept supplementary, complimentary...
At least they know to hold the space, to hold in the space in the packet.
Yeah, right. It, what's critical is that the... Right, what's critical is that the requests come in in time to be able to consider whether or not to put them on the posted agenda by Thursday. And if they get on the agenda, then we must have the backup materials by Friday.
All right.
And if we don't, we just say you didn't get in?
We don't, then we...
We skip right over that agenda item and then get over to your turn.
That has happened before. That's nice.
All right. So, agenda procedures, I think, um, Jen made a good point, and I have some thoughts here, you know, on the order of things. Call the order, pledge allegiance, reading mail, add in public input and board member updates. Minutes can, can drop down. And other than that, I think, well...
This isn't really how we do it, though, right?
No, we're not even, it's not even a good practice to do old or new business.
Right.
We, we try to specify what it is.
Yeah, so...
Can we just have a, an outline of...
Yeah, well, we usually have...
Whatever that, right. I mean, one and two is always the same. And then it's, isn't it pretty much...
Call the order, pledge allegiance.
Yeah, call our pledge of allegiance, reading mail, signing warrants, public input, board member updates.
Right, but then it's new business, and then sometimes it's other business, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, the joint meetings are, appointments are usually early. Joint meetings, if we have them next, are public hearings. Department reports, town administrator...
I would, I would list some of those items, but then say, you know...
Get it close.
Get it close and say, you know, at the, you know, these items will be scheduled as, you know, practicable. Since that word seems to be coming about.
Practicable.
Sure. We'll get a, we'll get an outline of the way we do it.
Yeah, just throw it on there. But I want, I just wanted to add in, make sure we add a pledge allegiance and then the public input and board member updates.
Gotta get the pledge in there.
Well, we don't want anyone coming in there and saying, oh, we don't have a public input anymore. I'm taking that off the agenda.
Okay.
As hard as I tried.
Cranking through. Can we please call Jen Gibbons an administrative assistant and not a secretary? Are we all okay with that?
Well, I think that's her position anyway. I think we just need to update this thing here.
Executive assistant.
Executive assistant. Pardon me, I was incorrect. Executive. Fancy briefcase.
Don't matter what they call you, it's what they pay you.
Again, swear or affirm.
Yeah, but it's what they call you that you can put on your resume.
Sure.
I also saw, Jen, there was a period down there at the bottom of page 48, which was there and shouldn't be.
So, anybody else, I'm looking at mine.
Swear or affirm. Faithful duty. Again, top note, say, swear or affirm.
Vivian?
Um, 48 still?
No, we're on 50.
Yeah, well, you have something on 48?
Yes.
All right, what do you got?
I would like to add some wording in there that, um, that better identifies and protects us from potential violations of open meeting law.
Okay, how so?
In, well, the wording I use, well, email, and it's not the wording that I would want in there, but email polling runs the risk of violating the open meeting law. Language to the effect, polling the board shall only be initiated by and responses directed to the town administrator. So, it's clear that no polling will occur between board members. Only from between board members and the town administrator at the request of the town administrator.
Where is the polling right now?
Right here. We're in the third paragraph under minutes.
Oh, up there, all right.
Polling the board.
Which poll, the polling of the board should probably be its own category, right? It's not really under minutes. That should be bold and moved over...
Yeah, it should be a separate one.
So, okay, Alex, so can you add your, can you state what your addition is again there?
The purpose of polling the board is really to give the town administrator guidance on routine administrative matters. And, um, so... Of the sort that the open meeting law does not consider to be deliberations. I mean, there's a, there's an exception for administrative matters like scheduling meetings and things like that. But where it does violate open meeting and polling, if any of that polling goes between board members.
Well, that's the Littleton decision.
Yeah. So, all I want is, what I'm looking for is a little stronger language that reinforces. Well, I wouldn't poll, well, believe me, I, I wouldn't poll you for starters to say, okay, now, who's okay with Matt King as the chief?
Yes.
I understand. Can I poll? No, so...
Well, but we, what if we get...
You gotta do that here.
Okay, but, you know, for instance, with respect to this exercise, when you reminded all of us, don't forget, you should be coming on December 2nd.
Right. That was a strictly administrative...
And I replied and said, thanks for the homework over the, over the break.
Yeah.
That reply was not at all in violation of the open meeting law. That was my own commentary for which no one needed to reply to. Subsequent to that, I said, could you give us an editable Word document?
Yes.
And I said that to everyone. So, everyone would think, oh, there's an editable, then you sent it back to everyone. Should I have just sent that to you?
No, not necessarily. You could have...
It was all admin, right?
You could have. You could have, but it doesn't even violate it.
You could have, but the fact that you didn't did not violate it because we were still in the administrative. We weren't doing, we weren't, we weren't beyond the, the just administrative...
Right. Had I commented, I think it appropriate that we changed the policy to swear or affirm, that would've been a problem.
Only if somebody replied.
That would've been beyond the pale, yeah.
But I, I shouldn't, um, I shouldn't bait someone into wanting to reply with making a comment like that. Okay.
But it's, sometimes you don't even have to bait people and you get the, sometimes you tell people, please don't reply, and you still get replies. But, um, but...
You've done that.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, well, I'm the king of unsolicited advice, so it happens. But the, um, I, if you're, deliberate or decide is what gets you into trouble. That's what it is.
But it seems to me that the policy as written here says to poll the selectmen on issues of informal or strictly administrative nature. And we can do that by email.
Right, but he...
But you'd like to add...
I just, I, I, I wanna make it a little stronger.
Okay, can you read it again?
For, for...
Okay.
Making it very clear that this board does not want to participate in anything that could be construed as a violation.
So, can we say...
Well, he has suggestion language, I think, don't you?
Well, not really specific language.
And no decisions or discussions will ensue from email polling?
Well, I think if you strike the second sentence, I think you'd be better off. Where it says it's the board's policy that polling of limited issues that are not significant matters of public policy.
Okay, strike that.
Even insignificant matters of public policy would be a violation, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I think you're okay if you leave the first...
Do you want to add in something like, you know, special attention shall be paid to the open meeting law when conducting polling? Do you want to add something like that or just strengthen it?
No discussions or decisions.
Deliberations.
Well, you see, issues, issues of a strictly administrative nature in compliance with the open meeting law.
Yeah.
There you go.
Because that is, yeah, all right. Got it, Jen?
She's an executive assistant. I'm sure she's got it.
All right. Alex, you good with that?
Uh, yeah, that, that'll...
All right, let's see. Where are we going next?
Swear or affirm.
That's fine.
Again?
Uh, this is...
This is appointments of volunteers to boards. I, I have something of a concern about, um, folks who come before us and say they want to participate. We go through this process of appointing them, and then, you know, five, six, eight months later, they say, I quit. Sorry, I've got other things. It's too busy. And then we have a vacancy on that board. And if it's our policy that these folks have to continue to serve until a successor is chosen, I think we should let people know that upfront. You're not permitted to relinquish the reins until we find someone to step into the saddle.
I've, I've never met someone who, who would even stay beyond the day that they decide that they're gonna resign.
Okay, then we should just, we should cross that whole thing out then. Because if we're, you can't require people to continue to serve if everyone, just get rid of it.
Delete and renumber.
All right.
All right, we include, uh, email address you need.
Diane Croy asked me for my email address. I think she's asked all of us for them in case people want to contact us publicly. I think you changed from your personal email to a selectman email. I think she already does this. So, we probably should just have email address on there because it is part of what she asks for when you sign up, so to speak.
Yeah, but, you know, before I used it, I, I didn't want my email, before I had a separate email, I didn't want my email published. Everybody, it was through Keith.
And we can still use an email through Keith. And folks who are on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee can certainly come up with...
But this is update, oh, maintain public, you see, that's published. So, you're, where's she gonna publish this? See, your, your email's gonna be published?
I, I don't know where she publishes them.
I think it's on the website. I don't want...
No, you know what? That's not true.
I don't think the home phone numbers are...
No, the home phone isn't, nor are the mailing address in the orange book. None of us have, well, I just do, but next year I won't.
We want the town clerk to have this, this contact information.
Right, but it's the publish.
We don't, we don't publish it.
Maintain and, take out publish.
Take out publish, maintain and update. Yes.
Name, voting address is...
That doesn't, yeah, take, yeah, strike publish.
And can we include email?
There's no statute here that says, that gives us any requirements to...
No, none, no. And voting address is public information.
And since you're not gonna publish it, it would be reasonable to include email because that's the principal means of communication with our town board members.
Right. I'm okay for it being, yeah, in town, all right. All right, hometown data, all right. So, where else are we going now?
I think it needs to be italicized. It wasn't italicized before. It's Latin.
Which is on page 50.
Where are we now?
Town council.
All right, um, go ahead, Alex, you want to open it?
Well, the board serves as the gatekeeper for town council, but public officials have an absolute right to town council over, um, ethics, questions about ethics.
Yeah.
And maybe we should recognize that in here. That we, we cannot gatekeep some town official that wants to get advice from town council about ethics issues.
With the exception of...
It says that on page 51, but I have to find that. I don't have that in the...
Yeah, I don't have page 21 either.
Is it?
Well, this, this, it ended midway on page 51. Okay. It's fine. I don't think I made any changes on collective bargaining.
I would say the, you know...
Yeah, we'd have to take a look at the whole thing. I didn't...
Well, I'd say there could be some sort of, um, you know, in here, the, you know, you're putting here in the last paragraph, legally, the only, you know, in accordance with Mass General Law, you know, public officials elected or appointed public officials have a right to, um, discuss with town council issues of ethics and things like that.
Yeah, because it's the law. You can just recite the law and what it says to do it. I'm pretty sure it already does. Let me see.
You got 51 that's in?
I didn't see it.
51 right here, yeah.
Yes, we don't, we don't have, we can't see what this is.
No, the board select may also grant, grant, act, limited access to town council for a certain period of time. Oh, you can't see, you got...
We didn't bring the book.
Ah, who's prepared now?
I, I have mine. Would you like to see it?
You don't have to prove anything to me.
I have all mine in memory.
All right, ready?
All right, are we...
Policy 17, part A.
17, part A, oh.
He said he has my memories.
Are we, are we done with policies?
Are we gonna, oh.
Oh. Wow.
That's what it says, and we should add the language that suggested regarding...
Yeah, like Alex said, just take it right out of, uh, take it right out of the Mass General Law.
Why can't we have this? But this helps having this up here. All right, so we'll add...
Jen, we'll look it up.
Okay. If it's updated, then I can't take notes on what I'm, what I'm doing, so...
Oh, it shuts off the monitor?
Well, I, I, this will only show up there what I, what I'm, what is on my screen, so when I'm using it for...
Oh, tweeting?
To, yeah, tweeting. Doing my meeting summary that I'm doing right now.
All right, so, you know, that gets us, I believe, to code of conduct and ethics. Do we want to, uh, we got quite a few things. It's 10:00. I think we should table this to either December 16th or January 10th, just because it's one big policy. And I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion. Is there any objection to that?
No, we should dedicate, make sure the time is allotted for it.
Yeah, I mean, half hour should be fine, yeah.
Yeah, but I agree. It's a little late to stop that.
Yeah.
And it appears as though Chief Wodzinski did not come back, so are we tabling 60?
Well, let's, let me, um, well, my thoughts on the fire station, again, I think this is one that was listed as I put on here. I do want to talk to him. I think what's, I think there's a perception by some in town that, you know, this is a go, that the fire station is gonna be, you know, go. And I think we need to provide some direction on it. And I think the other thing we need to make a decision on is, I know I wasn't here for the discussion, but I think, um, we need to decide whether or not we're gonna have it at the current location or if we're gonna continue to look at other locations. From what I read, it seems that the best place for it is the current location. And if so, we should make that decision and give some direction.
I agree. I think there's, there's three factors. Number one, is there a need? I think we can all agree there's a need on it. Number two is to pick a location. And number three, how are we gonna fund it? I, I wish to...
When? I would start with when and how we're gonna fund it.
Right. And I wish the, um, FinCon was still here because they pointed out something, why, maybe you could elaborate on it, that when does the high school come on?
The high school debt is finished in fiscal '23.
Twenty, 20, 23.
How about some of the other schools?
I thought there was something that was off on the, in 2018.
Um, I took a look at the debt service schedule.
It's a great way to look at it.
Inside debt and outside debt. So, if, if the goal of the board is to fund this inside the levy limit, um, it's a fiscal '23 issue, which means you'd look for the design money in fiscal '20. If the board is willing to use the debt exclusion and keep it, keeping in mind, I looked at the fiscal '12 and '13 as the threshold for paying for debt exclusions. That was the high level, not going beyond that.
Yeah.
Then you could do the design in fiscal '16 and placing the debt in fiscal '19. So...
Without increasing the amount.
Without increasing the debt exclusion.
Which would not, not, hence not increasing taxes. But not...
Not beyond what you've had for debt exclusions.
So, but not, not letting stuff fall off the rolls and decreasing taxes either.
My question, my question would be, the, the high school was built in 2000. The borrowing happened in 2001. It was a 20-year note. Where are you getting...
The permanent debt was, is paid off. I, I looked at the debt schedules now. The last payment is in fiscal '23.
What is the last payment? And what does the schedule look like?
It's, I can, I can email that out. Um, I just have the summary documents here. I just have the summary documents here. It's several hundred thousand a year, it's, you know, but looking at that.
The high school was inside?
Yes.
School was inside.
So, so the next question, as it regards to the funding, with the refinancing of the high school debt, we're saving approximately $200,000 a year. So to look at that as a source, right now, what we're saying to that is, hey, we're just using that as capital money. So that's another discussion that I think we should have. And again, I think Joe's points are right on the mark. Is there a need? What's the location? And we talk about the funding, when and how?
Okay. One at a time, yes, we've all discerned that there's a need within the next 10 years.
Obviously, yeah.
All right, so let the, you know, we can let the minutes reflect that. Two, on location, I just see that there's a lot of running around, a lot of extra work being done when we might already have the answer. So do we want to stop the running around and say, "Look at the location that we have now, is the best location," or do we want to say, "Let's keep looking"?
Well, I think there's some, there's some big ramifications here, because moving in a site frees up a lot of things for maybe parking wreck or COA and stuff like that. So, you know, that, that's, you know, that's an important discussion. It's not a discussion about the fire station as much as is about strategically how we want, you know, how we want to do things. Because I think, you know, we need a fire station one way or another, but, but where the fire station is located has ramifications in other ways. One of them is cost. And so I'm, I sort of, I don't know if they're, if we're being shortsighted just to decide one way or another, but we do need to take the leadership on this issue, and we do need to decide, you know, how, how the process is going along, and, and what else we want to address in the process.
Yeah.
So my opinion on, on the location, Mr. Chair, would be, you take a look at the operational costs that will recur every single year. A new building is going to add hundreds of thousands of dollars on an operational budget because you have to maintain that building.
Yeah.
You have to heat it, it's going to need electricity and so forth. Then you talk about the old building, if we, if we don't use it for the fire station now, it's going to be rehabbed, it's going to be brought up to code once you start. That's millions of dollars. So based on that alone, it's my opinion that the current location is the best scenario financially. We've heard in the past that the location is very well-suited. We've seen PowerPoint presentations that gone through two iterations, I believe, and the latest one, sorting up the building and make it wider, that are functional and will last the town in excess of 50 years. So my opinion is, leave it where it is, move forward, give the chief the decision to, I shouldn't say move forward, to continue, to continue to gain the support of the people in town, to do his outreach as he's been doing, and then we can make financial decisions later on, but that's my opinion.
Right.
Actually, I have different info. The, inside the levy limit debt, we're paying about $900,000 a year now.
Okay.
In fiscal '19, I need $400,000 in debt service capacity in order to support the fire station at the $6.5 million threshold. In fiscal '19, we'll be down to $500,000. So I have the $400,000-
In '19.
In fiscal '19, which would allow us to do, like, the design work in '17, '18 with placing the debt in '19. I can certainly go through this, put together a plan for the board to consider, looking at for a timeline, if that's something-
One step at a time.
Yep.
We've actually taken two right now, but-
Yeah, so, so my opinion, again, leave it where it is, continue on, give the direction to continue on the public relations piece that he's been doing.
Yeah.
And to garner the support that is going to be necessary for the building to move forward, and then talk about the funding.
Stop running around chasing your tail for these other properties.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, I mean, I wasn't, unfortunately, I did miss that presentation, but I did review it, and I'm looking at it right now. And, you know, the other thing I look at is this right here, is the, you know, there's a Morgan property, nice open property, and what are you doing, right in the middle of it, boom. I mean, it's, it's obviously a small portion of it, but, you know, what's next? You know?
And I've said this, I've said this in previous meetings, the Morgan property is on our radar because the parking wreck needs some fields. And that's why it's on the radar. And that's how this whole Morgan property came to be put on the front burner, which I think is fantastic. The town needs more playing fields, soccer fields, lacrosse fields. There's a battle for that right now, come springtime, so.
And why can't they be concurrent? Why couldn't fields fit in this swath?
I'm not saying they couldn't.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying they couldn't. I'm just saying that the Morgan property was on our front burner. It, it, it came-
Came into our focus.
Into focus because of the recreation request. That's, that's all.
You know, when I think about what Jim's saying, and, you know, and, yeah, we have to look at what Park and Rec wants, and are we going to need a Park and Rec building and all that stuff. But there's nothing saying that moving the fire station, I wanted to look at all the options, but we don't take away any options if we keep it, this fire station in the same spot. Because if we want to build a building for Park and Rec, we can build it on the Morgan property.
Right.
So, you know, in order to keep things moving, let's stay where we are.
All right. I'd like to formalize it with a vote, just so that we have it on the record.
Make a motion for the board of selectmen to approve the location of the fire station at, what, Foster Street?
21 Foster Street.
21 Foster Street. 21 Foster Street.
And to provide further direction to the chief to-
And to provide further direction to the chief to continue his public relations-
At that property.
At that property.
Before you go any further, I just want to make, I have a disclosure which I'll give to, to Jen for the record, which is our infirmary with the town clerk. So there's no, there's no conflict of interest here.
No, this is a building.
Just disclosing for the sake of, of being transparent.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what I'm going to go on the record and saying, "My son is a member of the fire department."
Yeah. There's no financial gain in this, there's no, okay. Motion remain seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, I'm a seconded. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion remain seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining from a vote, Jen.
All right. So, so another item that I had put on here is the goals and implementation update, and if we want to table this along with anything else, we can do that, but I just thought it'd be good to have a look at, you know, where we're at. We set these goals, and then it seems like we never revisit them, so I just wanted to have something to look at.
Sounds good.
All right.
I'd like to do it later.
Table it, okay.
Yeah, we'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay, great.